Take your hat off, put your hand over your heart. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time we'll observe a moment of silence, please.
Sheevy, absent, Breckus, Zadra, Delgado, absent, George, Jordan, Kachel.
Here. At this time we'll go to public comment, Brock Mailath.
For the record, I'm Brock Mailath. I have spoken at this podium before on various matters that have been acted upon to make this city a better place for its citizens. Today I'm here to represent the Transgender Allies Group, or TAG. As its name implies, this is an organization of people, professionals, therapists, parents, friends, allies, and transgender people that are committed to educate and advocate for the needs of the transgender community in northern Nevada. Today is the International Transgender Day of Remembrance. This day serves several purposes. It raises public awareness of hate crimes against transgender people and action that current media doesn't perform. This Day of Remembrance publicly mourns and honors the lives of our brothers and sisters who might otherwise be forgotten. Through the vigil, we express love and respect for our people in the face of national indifference and hatred. This Day of Remembrance reminds non-transgender people that we are their sons, daughters, parents, friends, and lovers. It gives our allies a chance to step forward with us and stand in vigil, memorializing those of us who've died by anti-transgender violence. Yesterday was the 150th anniversary of the Gettysburg Address, where President Lincoln stated that this nation was dedicated to the proposition that all men are created equal. I interpret Lincoln's use of the word "men" to include all of mankind; otherwise, most of the elected officials on this dais would be excluded. It is the duty of government to uphold that proposition and ensure that acts of neglect and violence toward any segment of the population will not be tolerated. The city of Reno, through the mayor, was given an opportunity to publicly proclaim at this meeting that today is the Transgender Day of Remembrance. Unfortunately, for reasons that have not been made fully clear to me, this did not happen. But the purpose of this day is not to cast blame, but to appeal to the understanding and for compassion. Now is the time for our city to embrace and include this part of this population and publicly recognize that the city upholds the values of freedom, justice, and human dignity for all. There is still hope for the future. I invite all members of the council and all persons in northern Nevada to join us at Reno's Transgender Day of Remembrance vigil. It will be held tonight at 7:00 PM at the Unitarian Universalist Fellowship of Northern Nevada, 780 Neal Road. The doors open at 6:30. I look forward to seeing you there. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Marcus Moore. Marcus Moore.
How is everyone today?
Good, and you?
All right. My name is Marcus Moore. It's Marcus Jams. I'm a street performer, and I'm also a full-time college student at TMCC, currently a director of the Media Department of the International Club. And I'm here today to support our First Amendment right, freedom of speech, and because it brings families and youths together. And out here in front of the City Hall, I play often, and I notice that night, between hours of 4:00 or 5:00 o'clock, around that time, families and children sit around and listen to the music and share good times, old memories. So I like to share a brief song called "Reunited." It's one of the songs I play out here that brings them together. It's old-school jam. "Reunited," just a good.
Thank you. Debbie Strickland.
For the record, I'm Debbie Strickland. I'm the Executive Director for Northern Nevada Children's Cancer Foundation. Thank you for having me here today. I came out today to just do a formal thank you to all of you. We raise financial and emotional awareness for local families that are fighting pediatric cancer, and we had a beautiful family found our doors, and unfortunately, their young daughter lost their fight abruptly, and the communities surrounded around them. And on behalf of Channel 2 and Mayor Kachel, who came out, and Chief Hernandez, that started this as well, you all came together and you put together a fundraiser. It was a dining out among local restaurants. You raised over $10,000 for my organization. So it's a beautiful, beautiful thing that you guys rallied for. And on behalf of the families that we serve, on behalf of the bottom of my heart, thank you so much for doing this, and I look forward to a long partnership with you.
Thank you. Ted Lavater.
Ted Lavater, forth of the record. I was surprised by the lack of understanding displayed by members of this body during our last discussion of proposed changes to RMC 5.14. Had I known members of this board were unable to distinguish between expressive speech and commercial vending, or to detect the nuances differentiating a work of fine art and a street hot dog, I would not have expected them to grasp the subtle difference between a moral and a legal justification. For those who misconstrued my statements on this issue as an attempt at legal advice, I will simplify my position so you can better understand me. Your decision whether or not to license First Amendment activities is a moral, not a legal one, and it starts with the premise that you have a responsibility to alleviate the suffering and protect the rights of our community. The argument goes like this: All people are born with natural rights. The Constitution simply recognizes a portion of our natural rights and establishes a system of government, that's us, for the sole purpose of protecting the rights of the weak from oppression by the strong. Protecting those who cannot protect themselves is our highest moral imperative. Any barriers that government erects between people and their freedoms disproportionately chill the rights of vulnerable classes of citizens. And when the issue at hand is a scheme to license our fundamental right to self-expression, not only would approving such a code violate your oath to defend the Constitution, it would make you complicit in perpetuating the suffering of the most disadvantaged, at-risk, and impoverished members of our community by denying them access to the healing power of self-expression. Now, after reviewing the staff report for this week, it seems unlikely to me that you will be pursuing licensing of First Amendment activities. While I am pleased to know that marginalized members of the Reno community will be free to express their truth, I remain wholly disgusted with the ethical character of this institution. For it is not sufficient to simply do the right thing. An ethical person makes the right decisions for the right reasons. Whether your vote today is to implement staff recommendations or follow the example set by Sparks, your decision will be based on a single, common consideration: the fiscal bottom line. If it weren't for the potential fiscal impact of informed citizens asserting their rights, you would be happy to persist with staff's recommendations and implement their malicious revenue-generating scheme. I am deeply troubled by your inability to see anything of significance beyond the almighty dollar. If the only point on the moral compass of our local leaders is marked with a dollar sign, I hold little hope for a future where sustainability, equality, and autonomy are held as our guiding principles. I have dedicated my time over the last year to defending the interests of the innocent from the oppression of corrupt and ill-conceived policies from this board, and over that time I have learned one irrefutable truth: The only power you have over me is the power that I give you. With that idea firmly planted in my mind, I no longer care what action you take today because your illegitimate actions have no effect on me. I do not now, nor will I ever, recognize your right to license my First Amendment activities. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Chikar.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor.
How are you?
Councilpeople. For the record, my name is David Chikar. I'm an independent artist. I'm one of the few artists that is actually trying to scratch out a living here in the biggest little city of the world, which also, if we need another title, we could call it the biggest little city in the world, and the most awesomest little city in the world because it really is. I ask you today to consider, for the financial sake of the city, to invoke Reno City Charter Article 2, Section 2.060, Subparagraph 2, Section 11. That concerns oral communications and public comment. There's a gentleman here today named Steve White that has some very important things to say about the proposed amendments that are on our agenda list that is in page 2 of what we're doing today. It's 1.1.1 through 1.1.6. That concerns the codes Title IV, Title VIII, Title V. They basically concern business licenses, First Amendment rights, and there's amendments. Steve has a lot of experience with this. He is the plaintiff in White versus the City of Sparks, went through to the Ninth Circuit Court of Appeals in the year 2007. What this says on that citation that I just gave you, it says, "Oral presentations given during the public comment section of the agenda shall be confined to three minutes maximum duration unless the mayor or city council grants additional time." Mayor Kachel, I implore you, sir, that please consider to allow Mr. White to have a few more minutes than three minutes. I think it'll actually benefit the city in the long run. I believe he'll be able to explain a lot of things that could financially impact the city, which basically means if these codes and amendments have any constitutional infirmities, all it really is going to do is open the door to federal court. We don't need that. We love this city. We don't want to have any type of financial impairment to the city. We want to enhance the city. Artists like my friend Marcus, we enhance the city. We're a value-added attraction. Tourists come here. I draw their pictures. I give them joy. They listen to Marcus's music. They go away happy. The perception is that these artists are going to ruin the special events. We're going to come inside, and that ain't going to happen. First of all, there's not that many artists, and what you may not know is that we also police ourselves. We watch what people are doing because we want to make this city vibrant, and Mayor, I think you could help do that if you'd consider giving Steve White additional time. Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much. John Ovestre.
Thank you, and thank you, Mr. Mayor, for that very long moment of silence. Really appreciate that. First of all, John Ovestre, Reno High, Class of 72. I want to congratulate everyone who was involved in the road reconstruction project at the intersection of South Virginia and Moana. Fantastic job, isn't it? It is a thing of beauty, and because it is concrete, a joy for, well, maybe not forever, but for a much longer time than if asphalt had been used. So I would encourage you to continue to choose to use concrete over asphalt and that other nasty tar, hot patch stuff you see being used as Band-Aids for many of our streets and parking lots here in Reno. Of course, although concrete is more expensive upfront, I believe it is cheaper in the long run, especially when you factor in externalities such as its superior ability to reflect heat and light, and the fact that it is not nearly as toxic or noxious as the asphalt-related products. One more thing. South Virginia, southbound, starting at Mount Rose Street, is in serious need of repair. As a bicyclist myself, it is narrow and dangerous and dotted with potholes. It's unfortunate the bus stop shelter was built before widening the street because I believe there actually is room to widen that stretch of road to allow for a bike lane. And also, thank you for the many new bike lanes we have in this city.
Thank you. Maggie Telander.
I'm Maggie Telander, and I'm a member of the Montage HOA, and I would like to lodge a formal complaint against two nightclubs that are located directly across the street from the Montage, first being the Rise nightclub, which was approved as a business, I believe, in March of '12. And at that time, it was, I believe, it was determined that they were going to keep their waiting lines interior of their building. That has changed. They no longer keep the waiting line interior of the building. So the residents of the Montage are subject to excessive noise from 11:00 on Thursday all the way through Sunday morning at 5:00 AM. Lines are rep outside the door, down Sierra Street, and around the corner onto Second Street, who are asking help with this excessive noise, that the lines be moved interior to the building, or another entrance to the building be considered possibly off the alley on the backside of the building. The second nightclub that is giving us a lot of problem is the West Second Street Bar, directly across the street from people that live facing onto Second Street. They have a karaoke bar. Their windows are open all night long with music blaring at an excessive level. They don't close their windows. Their windows are left open. We're asking that the windows be closed by 11:00 PM every night of the week, and that they lower the intensity of their music so that the new residents that are moving in and filling up our building can sleep. Thank you for your consideration.
We'll refer those to the code enforcement to have them look into it. Stephen Loy.
My name is Stephen Loy. I'm a 65-year-old resident property owner and have lived here for 26 years. For the record, I'm not a lawyer, a politician, or a bureaucrat. I'm one of those endangered citizens. I'm here to petition the council to immediately stop enforcement of the provisions of the City Ordinance 8.06.055, better known as the Alarm Code, and either repeal the ordinance or get a written opinion from the Attorney General as to its constitutionality. It's clearly unconstitutional as it applies to residents. Section 310 of the Nevada Constitution says, and this is in its entirety, "All household goods and furnitures used by a single household and owned by a member of that household are exempt from taxation." The alarm permit, whether you call it permit fee or anything else, is taxation. The city's collection procedure is clearly illegal and smacks of a Chicago-style extortion. ATB Services, which uses your city seal, is out of Colorado Springs. They haven't been licensed to do business in this state since 2012. Their collection agency, which is called Mercant Creditors Adjusters, there could be no record of them being licensed in this state to do business. I wish to serve them in a lawsuit. There's no one to serve. I'm a retired businessman. I had to have licenses, agents of service, et cetera. The city council is violating their oath of office by not holding up the Constitution, and I'm sure you're not aware of this, but it is a liability. And citizens like myself shouldn't have to litigate to enforce the provisions of the Constitution. I've contacted two members of the city attorneys. I'm trying to avoid the litigation, okay? But I have time and I have the money, frankly, okay? Neither one of them has returned my call. Well, one of them returned my call after I called a second time. I spoke to one. He was ill and going home for the day, quite frankly. The other asked me to email her the information, and I never got a response. So I'm appearing for you. I'm asking for answers. I do have a handout with documentation of everything I've said, okay? But again, I'm offended because I feel I'm being extorted by someone out of Colorado Springs and now Nebraska, and frankly, I discovered it on a credit report that I was shocked to see. My credit is perfect except for somebody from Nebraska saying that they're enforcing laws of the city of Reno. Any questions? Would you like a handout?
My name is Mark Glenn, and I'm a commercial realtor and investor here in the area. As a buyer and seller of real estate, there are obviously risks involved, just as there are in any other type of investment. The owners of the summit are sophisticated individuals and fully understand the downside when they purchase a property. Most current owners of commercial real estate have taken a substantial hit in the Reno area over the last five or six years. It is not the responsibility of the city council to alleviate that risk by providing sales tax relief or any other tax relief, such as the city council has previously done with Apple, Cabela's, and the owner of the Aces baseball team. This kind of favoritism shown to wealthy investors who make substantial contributions to politicians' campaign reelection efforts is unfair to all other local property owners who take on all the risk of property ownership. It is also grossly unfair to the citizens of our community who subsidize these giveaways. At a minimum, this kind of favoritism shown to deep-pocketed groups should not be done without a vote being put to the people. The average real estate investor is not able to go in and renegotiate a deal that was done years before, and this should not be allowed to happen with the owners of the summit. Thank you.
Sam Diney, the encyclopedia of Reno government, the mayor's dream come true. City council's dream come true. Sam Diney with laryngitis on the city council day. Yes. At any rate, I'm Sam Diney. I'm an Air Force Academy graduate. I spent many years flying fighters and bombers defending our nation against enemies inside of the borders and outside of the borders, and I'm not here today to talk about the career politicians who are permeating our community, playing musical chairs from one lucrative-paying job to another. I'm not going to talk about the career politicians, and I'm not going to talk about the pathetically dysfunctional Reno media that has been permeating our community since the day I arrived on the scene 20 years ago and started my legendary streak of attending virtually every city council and county commission meeting since 1994. And I'm not going to talk about that. I'm a little concerned about this brouhaha that's been just permeating the community, just like everything else, permeating, my new word, I guess. At any rate, this brouhaha where there's certain people who seem to think that the mayor, any mayor, the mayor, any mayor, is a superhuman being. I've been at all of these city council meetings, and I can tell you right now, neither one of the mayors that I've been observed over these 20 years is any more of a superhuman than the other six people on the council. Sure, I guarantee you that if I was the mayor, or if I could make the decision, I could let Mr. George lead the parade. I could let Ms. Zadra put the trim on the Christmas tree. That was the important functions that differentiate the mayor from the rest of the city council? No. This is really bizarre. It's like a no-brainer. But anyway, considering the fact that the vote-stealing traders have control of everything anyway, I don't even know why we're having this Supreme Court brouhaha taking place anywhere. Whatever they come down with is the vote-stealing traders will supersede all of those decisions. And I have to hearken back to the last mayoral race as some proof of vote stealing and vote rigging. The last mayoral race in 2010, there was a young Marine Corps veteran who was running as the challenger in the finals of the general election. He was ahead, even in the Reno Gazette Regurgitator polls. He was ahead in all of the polls. I even had a very important person in the mayor's campaign tell me that I caused him the election, that current mayor, because I convinced him to go door-to-door for Harry Reid. At any rate, I look back on that thing, and during that campaign, here's this young Marine Corps veteran, just right in the middle of that campaign, within three months, he lost his job for no reason, and then his wife lost her job. So there's a family with no job who should have, he should have been the mayor, and she should have been the wife of the mayor, and instead, we have this going down.
Thank you very much. Having no other public comment. Yes, ma'am.
Mayor, I'd like to comment upon our comments made by our first speaker about the proclamations. I think that points to an operational issue we have here that we share with our chief executive, the city manager, and that is, you know, the proclamations are not something mentioned in Reno Municipal Code, our charter, or discussed in our rules, and people just don't know how to apply, to ask for a proclamation from the city of Reno. There's no process, and I'd call upon the council members to support formalizing a process to do proclamations and presentations, and for the city manager to work toward that also. So thank you.
Well, I didn't turn down doing a proclamation. We didn't get the information in time to get it posted, and didn't have it time for posting, and that's the only reason it wasn't done.
And that's fine, Mayor. I'm just asking for a formal process, maybe an application form or something, so people can know how to do it, and when they need to get it in.
Yeah. Well, they were told when to get it in. Okay. Now we'll go to the city manager.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
You didn't get it?
No, sir.
Sir, I thought you wanted to speak on the I items.
You wanted to speak on a certain item, not...
I'd like to speak on both, on both the mic as well.
Bring me this.
I did put down a certain agenda.
You did put an agenda item, that's why it wasn't up here.
Yeah, yeah. Could I speak now?
Yes, you come on up.
Good afternoon, members of the council. My name is Stephen White. I'm an artist, artist advocate. You know, I got into this whole thing of being an advocate for artists' rights after I witnessed the shooting and massacre at Columbine High School. I was there that morning, and after that, I, I hope all of us, we all sat and asked, what can we do about it? How do we stop this? How do we stop children from going into schools and killing people? You know, it goes beyond guns, gun control. It goes to the very fabric of our society. You know, we have surrounded our children with violence, and guns, and drugs, and all We've done this for years, throw in a couple of wars. And in that period of time, we've quite liberally robbed our generations of children of exposure to the fine arts. Painting and sculpture and photography, singing and dance and music. You know? These things nurture our children's souls. There's a big difference between a hot dog that some can say feeds the body and the fine arts, because the fine arts nurture the humanity in our society. And if we're going to address this whole problem that's now visited itself upon a school here in Sparks, this whore, we need to deliver the gift of art back to the children of our country, back to the children of your community. That was the reason why I went into federal court. That's why I've fought this battle for all these years, to deliver the gift of art back to the children of your community, as a gift from those children that died at Columbine, and now this fine teacher who gave his life in a school here in Sparks. I don't want you to just pass some code that places a bunch of restrictions on art. I want you to clearly define who an artist is, what are the fine arts. The Ninth Circuit has given us those definitions. And when you do that, you're going to find out, you know, there aren't very many artists, and artists aren't the problem here. It's all the commercial vendors trying to pretend like artists. Artists are people that paint paintings, like David back here and the gentleman that played the music. This is self-expression. Artists don't compete with your businesses. How does somebody's self-expression, how does one of my paintings compete with functional merchandise that's being sold in all your stores? It doesn't. It nurtures our souls, ladies and gentlemen. The fine arts give the gift back to children to have a positive way to express themselves. Some of these kids have a lot of terror in their lives. Some of them have a lot of pain in their lives. The fine arts give them the ability to deal with that, a positive way to express themselves. I want you to work with me. I introduce myself as a city attorney. We've been fighting for, intellectually fighting with each other for 10 years. I said, Mr. Mayor and all of you, please work with me. Let's get the fine arts back in our children's lives and build community financial support for our programs in our children's lives.
Thank you very much. Thank you. All right, now we will go to approval of the other city manager's report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On behalf of Manager Klinger, who's in Kansas City now at the invitation of the Kaufman Foundation for the Mayor's Conference on Entrepreneurship, along with Councilmember Delgado, I did want to present to you four items worthy of note in the manager's presentation. First and foremost, I think, is the product, really, that Vice Mayor Zadra, was kind of her brainchild, which is the Bi-Local Event. I did want to announce that for the second year, we're going to have the Bi-Local Event starting this next weekend. It will occur, we're doing it in a partnership with the Chamber of Commerce. It'll occur both Saturday, November 23rd, from 10:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., and Sunday, November 24th, from 10:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m., and it'll be held again at the National Automobile Museum. Hard to say. Automobile Museum. The Bi-Local Marketplace provides a unique shopping experience where people can buy their gifts, hopefully the ones they'll be purchasing over the holidays from local vendors, and that really is the purpose of that event. And it's been very successful the past year. We're hoping this year that it'll grow and be more successful, and we invite everybody to participate again, this coming Saturday and Sunday. The second special event I wanted to let everybody know about is the tree lighting and opening of the rink, which will occur next Tuesday, November 26th, at 5:00 p.m. This is an annual event where we have the lighting of the city's Christmas tree, which is located next to the skating rink this year. It's actually a permanent tree, which was recently placed. To commemorate the event, we have the Buildinghurst Middle School Choir, which will be singing holiday carols. In addition, we have the Tahoe Snowflakes and Eldorado's Ice Fantasy performing at the skating rink, so it'll be quite an event. People who bring hats, mittens, or other winter clothing to donate to Salvation Army will be given free skate rentals. So we did want to announce that, invite the community to come down and participate in that. I also wanted to announce that we have the city's 2013 Fall and Winter Recreation Program from Parks Recreation and Community Service, which identifies the many programs and activities at our pools and in our parks, our youth and senior programs. So I want to let people know that's out there, and you can get a copy of it online at Reno.gov/parksandrec. And then lastly, I wanted to announce that this morning, there was a graduation of 36 candidates from the Northern Nevada Law Enforcement Academy. Six of those graduates will be Reno police officers, so we wanted to congratulate that group. That's all I have for announcements.
That's great. Six new officers.
Six.
I love it. All right, now we go to approval of the agenda before I take a motion. Hold items J6 has been pulled. Proclamation, item C1, at the end of the month of November is National Diabetes Awareness Month. Presentation, Economic Development Update, David Weaver. Public hearings and stuff. On the lease, there's a time certain for presentation at 2:30 from JLD, from the truck driven flood management authority, bringing us up to date and giving us a thing of what they're looking at. Now, are there any other items y'all want to change or do? No, excuse me. And at 1:00, we'll hear items J7 and J8.
Move to approve.
Move to approve. Have a second. Have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those who oppose, no. Motion carries. You know, Mr.? Item A7, approval of the minutes, November 6. Second?
Second.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those who oppose, no. Motion carries. Test disperately, any qualifications or anything? Share with any motion.
Move to approve.
The motion, second. Second. All in favor, say aye. Those who oppose, no. Motion carries.
Thank you so much. Well, thank you. I'm proud to be able to present the proclamation today with regards to Diabetes Awareness Month. Whereas nearly 24 million American children and adults, including 160,000 Nevadans, 8.3% of the state's population, have diabetes, a serious disease that has no cure. And whereas, the cost of diabetes to the state of Nevada in 2007 was estimated at $1.52 billion. And whereas, another 54 million Americans have prediabetes, a condition that puts them at the highest risk for developing type 2 diabetes. And whereas, diabetes is the fifth-leading cause of death by disease in the United States, and more than one-third of the people with diabetes, 6.2 million Americans don't know that they have the disease. And whereas, millions of Americans lack access to the care, treatment, and education needed to manage the disease and prevent its serious and costly complications, including heart disease, stroke, kidney failure, blindness, and lower limb amputation. And whereas, an increase in community awareness of risk factors and symptoms related to diabetes can improve the likelihood that people with diabetes will get the attention they need before developing the disease and its devastating complications. And whereas, the good health and well-being of the residents of Reno are enhanced as a direct result of increased awareness of diabetes and its related complications. Now, therefore, I, on behalf of Robert A. Koschel, Senior Mayor of the City of Reno, do hereby proclaim November 2013 as Diabetes Awareness Month.
Thank you, Mayor Koschel, and council members from all of our families at JDRF for this wonderful proclamation, which brings diabetes awareness to our community in the month of November. My name is Mary Ann Zucker, President of JDRF, and this is Dr. Tracy Pitts. We both have children with type 1 diabetes. I have two children. And we can tell you personally that this is a devastating disease that never goes away and never has a day off. It is a chronic disease, and insulin is life support for our loved ones. I've been involved with JDRF for almost 20 years, and we are the leading funder of diabetes research to help cure, prevent, and treat diabetes. JDRF research directly impacts us here in this community. My daughter, Annie, who has had type 1 diabetes for 18 years, had diabetic retinopathy and was going blind in both eyes. And thanks to the research and the findings of a particular drug that was injected into both of her eyes, her eyesight has been restored, and that years ago was unheard of. So until there is a cure, JDRF is here to relieve the burden of living with type 1 diabetes, and I thank all of you for allowing us this opportunity to bring awareness for diabetes to this community.
We thank you, and thank you everything that y'all do and the work you've done to make it evident to people.
Thank you. Appreciate it. And Tracy has just a few things she wants to say as well.
Hi, I'm Tracy Pitts, and I am a member of the Board of the Juvenile Diabetes Research Foundation, and I'm actually the research chair. My son, Hunter, is now 16. He was diagnosed when he was five years old, a little kindergartner at Roy Gom. Just wanted to say thank you so much to the mayor for all you do for JDRF, and thank you to the city council for bringing awareness of diabetes. As the research chair, I have the privilege of listening in on the national findings and research findings of JDRF every month, and I assure you, just as we heard about the diabetic retinopathy results, there are amazing things that are coming out of all the research that is happening, and I really believe that a cure will be forthcoming soon. In our community, your proclamation raises the awareness that you understand and that you get that this is a big deal for people in our community, young and old, type 2 diabetes and type 1 diabetes. My son and I, as part of what we do with JDRF, we do go to the hospital, and we meet with newly diagnosed families and their little kids. And it's very touching, and it's very important to know that your community is behind you. And so, I get nervous when I talk about my son. The proclamation that you have done shows the city's encouragement to families and support, just like Hunter and I go into the hospital and providing one-on-one support. So thank you. You're letting the families of Reno know that you care, that you understand their suffering, and that you recognize their struggle. So thank you.
Thank you. Now you have to tell Hunter, he doesn't get piggyback rides anymore.
He loves you.
Thank you. Thank you, guys. All right. We do have a presentation that'll be done at 2:30. So now we'll move on in the agenda to -- well, we're about two minutes ahead of time, but I think we'll go ahead and move into J7 and J8.
J2?
Huh?
J2 is open.
Oh, yes. Sorry about that. Go ahead and introduce. That's right.
Mayor and council members, for the benefit of the public, I just wanted to remind everybody why we have this item on the agenda, the Economic Development Update. It really is twofold. One is to celebrate and acknowledge many of the wonderful businesses we have in the community, and perhaps more importantly, to spotlight some things that we have in our economy that people might not otherwise know about. We have the privilege today of having with us Mr. David Weaver, who's the Vice President of Sales for U.S. Foods, and we've asked him to come and have an explanation of what his business does and what he does for the community. So that was my introduction, and I'd like to invite Mr. Weaver up.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, the other council members, for inviting our company to say a few words to you today. I'll try to keep it brief and let you know who we are and what we do. Again, my name is David Weaver, Vice President of Sales for U.S. Foods. We're a food service distributor. You know, kind of when we think about food, it goes through two different channels. It goes through the channel that goes to the grocery stores, the retail side, or it goes to the wholesale side that our company is a part of. We are part of a large national organization, approximately $22 billion in sales. We have 62 distribution centers, and our company is fortunate to have two in Reno. Probably everybody on the council and in the audience probably don't know who we are, except you may see our trucks occasionally going up and down the road. Nice graphics says U.S. Foods, kind of orange and green, the color of food. But what we do is keep in supply all of the great restaurants, all of the wonderful hospitals, the healthcare facilities, the gaming facilities, small delis, some of our favorite restaurants. We keep them in supply of food. I think I have a way to advance this. There we go. I'll just breeze through this real quick. We've been in this marketplace for a long time, under different names. We've been called SE Reichoff &amp; Company. We've been called U.S. Food Service, and two years ago, we changed our name to U.S. Foods to more accurately reflect what we do. We are an innovative food company. We bring to the market things other than just boxes of frozen corn and chicken breasts. We try to bring new and unique items to the marketplace, so our customers, the restaurateurs of this community, can keep bringing new and exciting items to their patrons. We have more than 250,000 customers nationwide. To put that in perspective, we have, in our distribution area here in Northern Nevada, we have approximately 850 customers. So we are, if you do the math, we're one of the smallest distribution centers in our company. We have the other distribution center I was talking about, our building is located off of Golden Valley Road, just on the freeway on 395 North, going north out of town. But we have another distribution center on South Virginia called, it used to be called Next Day Gourmet, now it's called Culinary Equipment and Supply. It's actually a fulfillment center for the West Coast. It services all of our operating divisions, from Seattle, Washington, down to San Diego, to Phoenix, Salt Lake City, and it is purely an equipment and supply company. So when you go sitting down at your favorite restaurant and you're eating off of flatware or china or drinking out of wine glasses, or water glasses, or iced tea glasses, chances are, all of that product came out of that center in South Reno. Some of our customers, we sell to independent restaurants and small local chains. We sell to large national accounts. We serve acute and long-term healthcare facilities, hotels, the hospitality industry, colleges, K-12, Department of Veterans Affairs, military bases, other government agencies, fast-food chains, quick-serve restaurants, pretty much anybody who prepares food away from home. That's what we do. This is our west region. As I mentioned, we go from Seattle down to Phoenix, Arizona. All the white dots are distribution centers, but across the country, there are 63 distribution centers, like the one up off of Golden Valley, up in Golden Valley. Our mission is to transform the food service industry. That's a bold statement. We belong to a very stodgy brick-and-mortar industry where we buy and sell boxes, but what our company is trying to do is bring innovation so that we are looked at as a food company and not a distributor. Just real quick, if I may, who we are in Nevada. Since we're talking about the economy and economic conditions, we have two divisions in Nevada, broadline divisions. We have our center in Reno. We also have a sister company in Las Vegas. Between the two companies, we employ about 540 individuals. Our center in South Reno employs 26 more individuals. We have a meat processing facility in Las Vegas with 77 employees. So all told, we employ about 650 associates in the state of Nevada. This is our building, which is kind of exciting. A picture of a building is not real exciting, but this building, to me, is real exciting. And I'll tell you why. The -- And I'll tell you why. We are about 140,000 square feet. We have two additions that are going on right now, we're being built out. One is in our freezer, and one is in our cooler. Our cooler will restore all of our fresh product, cheeses, dairy, eggs, fresh meats, produce. We've doubled the capacity of that. It is scheduled to open...it was scheduled to open in June. It'll open mid-December to mid-January. Our freezer, we've added about 25% additional space on there, again, opening at the same time. What that means to our associates, and I hope to the local economy, is our business is thriving, and it has so even during the downtimes. We find that food service, distribution, and the dining away-from-home segment is a healthy segment. Oftentimes, it's the heart and soul, I think, of a lot of communities. It brings so many different factions together. It's part of the art, as I heard earlier in the meeting. This is...we just put some pictures up there. We do this presentation often to a lot of different organizations. Pardon me for skipping through there. The upper-left-hand picture was groundbreaking, January 1, 2013. When they started prepping the ground for our expansion, they had to dig through 18 inches of frozen ground. If you remember back last early winter, it was so cold. The backhoe had turned into a pick. The skeletal frame on the right, foundation on the lower left, and actually, the lower-right-hand picture is our finished building. We're just waiting for the final permits, bringing it down to temperature, then we'll Kind of a footprint, the light blue is where we go in our trucks. We have 35 multi-temperature distribution trucks. On any given day, there are anywhere from 20 to all 35 on the road in northern Nevada. We cover all the way out to Elko, out to Ely, Fernley, Fallon, Winnebago, Gerlach, all the way down to some small towns on the eastern Sierra in eastern California. Some of our customers that we serve, all familiar names, I hope, and more, many more. One thing that we're really proud of is that we really try to work with local suppliers. We pride ourselves on buying and distributing products from many Nevada-based manufacturers. Ken's Dressings down in Las Vegas, Michael's Foods in Las Vegas, Franco right here in Reno, Patterson Pacific, a paper converter, Pacific Cheese, who just built a plant here, a shredding plant a couple of years ago. Reno Egg, I still own there. Don, who owned Reno Egg, sold her business, but we were the first distributor of our size, actually distributing locally...local eggs in the area. Marvel Dairy, Winnebago Farms, Max Packaging, Sierra Meats, and a little company called Earth Alchemy. They grow pea sprouts in Reno. I don't know if anybody knew that. They are a...in the agricultural industry, but they grow one product, and we buy and sell as need be for them. One of our big successes, we partnered with a company called Latin Farms. They're a grower of many types of squash, melons, zucchini, tomatoes, and we went into partnership with Rick and brought the first locally grown produce to market in food service in northern Nevada. We support the community heavily through donations or other partnerships. Our company supports Feeding America. Locally, we do a lot of work with the Food Bank of Northern Nevada. Our employees volunteer their time on the weekends packing for their mini programs. Our prior president served on the board. Our current Director of Merchandising and Marketing now serves on the board. We just do a number of things for this organization, a great organization. That picture, we also do a lot with the Boys and Girls Club. We auction off a dinner annually for the benefit of the club. This year, it happens to be next Tuesday, and it was purchased by a local resident. There'll be a private dinner party for 18 to be held at the Governor's Mansion in Carson City, and all those people that you see there, other than the governor, are associates of U.S. Foods. We employ chefs. We employ prior servers of restaurants. They're all in sales now, and...but we do the private dinner party to benefit the Boys and Girls Club. Other charitable organizations we involve ourselves with, from local elementary schools to the Salvation Army, just a tremendous amount. We believe in giving back to the community. It forms a strong partnership. And I'll leave it open to any questions you might have.
Any questions? Anybody have any discussion? I do want to thank you for having been one of your customers.
And thank you very much.
We do appreciate your service.
Absolutely.
And the way you've grown in northern Nevada, and the jobs you've created, and what you do in the community. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Let's now go to Adams, J7 and J8. Discussion, direction, possible approval of consent, assignment of the Public Improvement and Reimbursement Agreement by and between Reno Retail Company LLC and the City of Reno dated October 1, 2004 to GNI 7 Reno Retail LLC Summit Sierra. Discussion.
Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to let you know that we have Councilwoman Sheevy on the phone.
Oh, she's on the phone? Good. Councilwoman Sheevy's on the phone.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. My name is John Frankovich. I represent Reno Retail Company, who are the owners, developers, and operators of the Summit Shopping Mall. Mr. David Silverstein, who's a principal with Reno Retail, is here. Is this working?
Yes, it's on.
Okay. We have two matters before the council today relating to an agreement, partnership agreement that was entered into between Reno Retail and the City of Reno in 2004. Some of you here were involved in that process. Some of you are learning more than you care about it, probably at this point in time. A lot has happened since 2004, and everybody understands we're working under a new economic reality that nobody imagined or anticipated. One of the results of that is one of the existing or former partners of Reno Retail, one of its equity partners, had to go through bankruptcy. Their bank changed hands three times. This required that the ownership at Reno...at the mall, Reno Retail, be restructured, renegotiated, with a new equity partner brought in, and new banking relationships. This required substantial time, effort, and work, and concessions. That has all been accomplished now. The new entity will now own and operate the mall. Reno Retail continues to be an equity partner in the new entity, and they will manage and operate the facility. Purpose today, because part of the transaction for the new owner, is to assign all rights that Reno Retail holds, and one of the rights that they hold is the agreement, the 2004 agreement with the city. So we're seeking the city's consent for that expansion. I'll point out that, under the proposal before you, it identifies that the assinee will be a company called GNI Roman numeral 7. The actual name, I want to make sure the record's clear, the actual name of the subsidiary that will own it is GNI Roman numeral 7 Reno Operating LLC. Just want to make sure that everybody knows that's who the assignment is. You'll notice on the matter before you, the dates of the assignment are blank, and with your permission, assuming your consent, we'd like to have the authority to fill them in as of the date of the closing. We anticipate the closing will be fairly soon, but certainly before the end of the year. We would request your approval of that assignment. If you have any comments or questions, either Mr. Silverstein and I would be glad to respond.
Okay. Mr. Chisel, do you have something?
Robert Chisel, Finance Director. For the record, no. Just was pretty much what Mr. Frankovich had said. This is a simple assignment of the rights of the ordinance and the purchasing agreement to the new company that is being reformed.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Chisel, I, you know, want to put emphasis on the word "simple," and also introduce the fact that I did not get a copy of this item until about noon today. On Friday, when our packets were ready, there was a memo that said that the counterparty was reviewing this. Something was handed to me yesterday around noon, and due to a clerical error, it was the wrong document attached. So I've just had a chance here to look at this two-page assinee, and I would say that, yes, it is simple in what we're assigning, but that maybe is a problem that I see in my eyes. First of all, the name of the counterparty that he mentioned is different than the county partner mentioned in the document. And finally, or secondly, it says, the first whereas is that we're amending an agreement dated October 1, 2004. I don't have a copy of that agreement. Now, J8, our subsequent item, has a copy of an agreement, but it's not an executed one, and so I don't know if we have full information here to see the reference document. And so I'm letting the council know that I do have concerns on the time that we've provided information, and frankly, the experience on the assignment of the curb issue fairly recently that occurred makes me think that maybe assignments are not simple. And also, reading what I think is the master document, I have a number of questions that I'm prepared to go into about that, but, you know, I'd like to add, I haven't had a whole lot of time to look at this. So I guess my first question, and I just have a few to begin with, let others take a chance, is in J8, the document that is unexecuted, is that your understanding of the document that we say we are assigning here?
That is, the same document. It just had not been...it's not an executed one, so...but it is the same document.
Do you have a copy of the executed document somewhere in your possession?
That would be with the city clerk's office.
Okay. Why wasn't it attached to this document? Why did we get an unexecuted copy?
Probably just a clerical issue.
Okay. So you have reason to believe, though, that the blank unexecuted document in J8 is materially the same as the executed document?
It is what was approved at council at prior.
Okay. Okay. So I guess, reading that other document, which we're assigning responsibilities of both parties, I see...I guess my first question is, this document seems to talk very prospectively about something happening in the future, if they build the project, these will be the things, if a bond document occurs. Don't you think that maybe, since we're reassigning responsibilities, we should maybe clean up this document to present tense situation, not only on the project's been built, but also, there's a lot of obligations, and if you will, clawbacks, to the counterparty? And shouldn't we take a snapshot of where we are today in the obligations of the counterparty to confirm that the obligations are and have been met?
Well, at this time, most of the obligations, we believe, as far as the agreement were met, as far as their retail mix, the number of properties that they were supposed to develop, the amount of the development, and how much money they were going to put in, all those obligations were met in the purchasing agreement or the agreement, earlier agreement. So all those were met at the time.
And Mr. Chisel, I would add that those documents have actually been shared and reviewed at this council table at prior meetings, where it's been illustrated, new, unexisting properties or stores, retail outlets, that were included there versus those that had representation in the market already. They far exceeded the demands.
Correct.
Other councils have seen 100% of what they did, and they did 100% of what they said they would.
So they have invested over $90 million?
Correct.
Okay. So in the assignability provision of this other document, there's the mix, and you are satisfied to date that they have met the mix. There's a lot of permutations of what could happen, what to happen, but have you...do you have any evidence of what the mix is today, as we reassign, and how it comports with what is in Section 6D titled...or, excuse me, Title 6...oh, sorry, having a hard time with this because I haven't had time to look at it that much. Well, it's 6D, all the conditions of the mix. Is there an attachment that shows the mix as it is today?
No, we have not done that as of today.
Have not updated that? Okay. So, following along with my questions, subsequent projects, and I'm talking on page 20 of the attachment of the purported executed document, subsequent projects. To the extent developer develops an additional project on properties abutting the project, then so long as the conditions of Section 12 are satisfied, the sales tax generated from the additional project can come in. Does that mean...and then there's some subs under that. Does that mean that they can build again a new, and then pull in more sales tax in for that on subsequent parcels, adjacent parcels, or something?
My understanding, and having to...I'd have to refresh my memory by going through the agreement, it was, there was adjacent parcel that was adjacent to the Summit Sierra as we know it now, that was envisioned to be Phase 2 of the project, and that would be included. I believe it's the area, if you go there, there's a vacant lot up toward the freeway. Is that correct?
So there's a...
There is vacant land, and that was the assumption.
Yeah.
So in reassigning this, we are also resigning a subsidy to them to conduct further development for retail operations, and we will pay them back for that infrastructure improvements?
No. The subsidy, it is only based on the sales tax that is created from the Phase 1 and potentially Phase 2 of the project, and is only as it increases by that 2% base limit that we talked about, and that's in the next item. And at this point, there is no reimbursement, and there hasn't been for a number of years because that...those criteria have not been met as far as the minimum sales tax that the city collects from all of the entities within Washoe County.
But say there is an escalation in sales tax, they could build public improvements on these adjacent parcels, and we would be paying them back for that. Is that correct?
No. It's just on the original $10 million.
Okay. Just on the original $10 million.
Are you about to wrap yours up? Does any other council member have a question at this time? Okay. If you'd wrap yours up, please.
I have a little bit more, and this is the Section 19 successors and assigns. It states that we may withhold consent of any assignment of developers' rights if there are circumstances, the proposed assigner does not have in our discretion the financial ability to satisfy the developer's obligations or responsibilities under the agreement. And there's a little bit more on to that. We've already heard that this is kind of a reconstituted group. One of the group has gone bankrupt. Have we looked through these different conditions to understand that these are folks who have the wherewithal to continue in their obligations to conduct and operate this retail operation?
May I answer your question, or would you? Those provisions in the original agreement before this project were ever built, and there was concern that the developer had the resources to develop the project. The developer's been fully constructed, been in operation eight years. The ownership and the obligations under the agreement are very nominal right now, frankly, for the owners of it, because they've satisfied all of those conditions. But there are continuing obligations with respect to maintenance of those. I'm not saying that there's no obligations, but there's very few, and that's what those things were intended to address. If you want to know about who the new equity partner is and ask questions about that, Mr. Silverstein is certainly here to respond. The important point is, the original Reno Retail is still an equity partner in this and still will be operating and managing this facility.
But Mr. Frankovich, you're precisely making my point, that the original agreement did talk about the project being developed, and maybe we should uptick that...upgrade that document into a current time of existence. So we are clear today, what are the obligations of both parties in this relationship. So you are making my point in terms of...
I hope not, because I don't agree with your point.
Well, but we're going to be in with this, in a long-term relationship with you. We made a substantial amendment to the party. I think we should upgrade it, so it's very simple for the city to go back and know what the obligations are. the obligations are of each party. And then, my other point is that I would have hoped that a staff report, an analysis, an application, or whatever you would bring forward on the reassignment, would have gone through all these scenarios and point to us how we can determine and use this discretion to do the reassignment. I don't see any of that here.
Well, the assignment has nothing to do with the performance of the obligation. If the developer hasn't performed before the assignment, he hasn't performed after the assignment. So, it's kind of irrelevant to the assignment. It may be some relevance to the second issue up today, as to where we are and whether we should redefine what has been accomplished under the agreement, although I don't know how deep we're going to get into that today.
But, there are subsequent obligations under the clawbacks I mentioned of maintaining the retail mix, which today, we don't even know what the retail mix is. So, I understand the payback on the infrastructure, but on the retail mix, there are continuing obligations, and I'm asking for an upgraded document that takes a snapshot of where we are in this relationship today.
Well, they, on the retail mix, they did everything we asked them to. They brought in new stores, they did everything, and they're still in the business.
But they have continuing obligations to maintain that mix, and we should be checking and see what they are.
Their obligations don't change because of this document.
Just because we assign it, their obligations don't change.
But it's up to us to currently-
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve the assignment.
Second.
Do we need to modify the name? Or is this-
No, the name, under the assignment as was prepared, it says that it would be GNI7 Reno Retail LLC, or its subsidiary. The name I gave you is the subsidiary. It wasn't a change, we just wanted to make sure that-
I didn't know if I needed to include it in there or not. So, that would be my motion, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, and I have a second. Before we go to that, I'm going to ask for public comments from Mr. Deney. Did you turn in a column, because I don't have it?
Jonathan?
Yeah, for the record, John, just a minor point. And then, the other request was for the date to be the closing date for the restructuring. So, right now, we leave that blank, just so if you could make that part of your motion.
So, you want to mean include this motion, that whatever the closing date is, is the date that'll be inserted?
That'll be effective, correct.
I'll include that in my motion, Mr. Mayor.
In the motion, can we have it also stated that all conditions have been met and are current?
I'm calling on you, just a minute, sir.
Tracy Chase Reno City Attorney's Office, that is not on the agenda item. I think the record indicates that, so I would recommend you keep this motion clean under open meeting law.
And for the record, John Shipman, Deputy City Attorney. I mean, factually, that might not be the case. As Councilman Breckus indicated, there are continuing obligations, things like retail mix, and again, those things, we don't know at this point in time factually whether or not those continuing obligations are being maintained, just factually.
So, then, we don't know if both party, if the party is living up to their obligations underneath, with the question mark.
Yes, come on up there, Mr. Silverstein.
I'm David. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I'm David Silverstein. I am one of the developers of the Summit project. To answer your question, yes, the retail mix, standing here today, satisfies the conditions of the obligations under the agreement that we adopted several years ago. I can just confirm to you that we are in compliance. Matter of fact, we're in compliance with each and every obligation under that agreement today.
Yes, you are.
And never been out of compliance, correct?
Never been out of compliance.
Through the duration.
For the duration, that's right.
For the duration, even during the downturn, even during the downturn in the economy, we were able to maintain the retail mix.
Mr. Deney, you wish to speak before I call for the vote?
Sam Deney, the encyclopedia of Reno government, and I hate to be the curmudgeon, but I'm one of the few connecting links between this situation, which happens to be the first time that the city of Reno blundered into this star bonds fiasco.
This is not a star bonds, Mr.-
I spoke against it.
This is not a star bonds agreement.
That was a star bonds back then.
That was never.
Never.
Never been a star bond project.
It's never been a star bonds.
No, sir.
The Summit has never been a star bonds project?
No, sir.
Well, then, somebody ought to get a hold of the Reno Gazette and bring them down here and have them correct their headlines from all of those years back then. At any rate, whether or not it was star bonds or not, just listening to, just listening to this discussion is reminding me a little bit of the disappearing parking meter bond that was, that Mr. Lorton over there discovered of $600,000. This whole, again, I hate to be a curmudgeon, and I'm not speaking for or against it, I warned against, I warned against star bonds anyway, whether or not this is or is not star bonds, there is some star bonds involved in the Summit, and I warned against it and all.
There's no star bonds. So, you either get your facts straight, or-
There's never been a star bond-
No, sir.
Relative to the-
No, sir.
Then I'll have to go out and get my facts straight, as you say.
You go ahead and get them fact, and then bring them-
But I think you are the one who is wrong, and you need to get your facts straight.
If I am, I'll apologize.
Everything I read and heard, at any rate, I don't want to argue about that. My point is, what I'm worried about mostly here, not wanting to be the curmudgeon with my laryngitis, is this part where, whether or not you agree to this, which I'm sure you're going to, where, and then it goes on shortly, in a few more minutes, you're going to say, possible financial restructuring.
I'll call you when you-
That's a nasty sounding word, of the bond ordinance for the sales tax increment, and then for the lien bonds, and also the public improvement reimbursement agreement. So, the refinancing of all that stuff, you're going to do this, and then you're going to go talking about whether or not you're going to refinance that stuff. I think you decide, you should decide whether you're going to refinance all that stuff before you agree to do this part of it.
Thank you very much for your comment. Mr. Eddie Lorton.
Mr. Mayor, City Council, Eddie Lorton for the record. I'd like to put J7 and 8 together, if possible, to save time, so I don't have to come up twice.
You've got three minutes.
Okay. Well, I ended up, also, Jenny mentioned some good points, and with the Curb Systems LLC, I wanted to know the tools implemented, they have the name change, and they never did a business analysis. So, I hope that they will do a business analysis to make sure the new entities is fiscally sound as the old entity before they go changing names, before they're going to change deals. That'd be appreciated, so we could get it correct this time. And then, also, I'm not in favor of changing deals. If they would have made extra money on this deal, because we work with them in the first place, they wouldn't have said, oh, here's a reserve of money, there you go, it's business. We worked for them in the first place, and I've found a lot of things lately, and it's because I'm not lucky or anything, when you do it a few times in a row, you know what you're looking for. So, I hope we can really consider that. I don't think we should change the deal, split their feet to the fire and move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. I have a motion and second on item J7.
Mr. Mayor, can we have absolute confirmation? We've tried correcting public comment from the dais. Can we have that confirmed from the city attorney's office, that this deal never, ever was or is a star bonds?
Yes, for the record, John Shipman, Deputy City Attorney, this is not a star bond deal, this is not a TID, this is a straight sales tax increment deal.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second.
Mr. Mayor, I won't be supporting the motion. I don't believe that we have done our due diligence under Section 19 successors and assigns, to understand if we are looking at this as an appropriate mechanism. Thank you.
All in favor, say yea.
Aye.
All that oppose, no. Show the vote. Five, four, one, five, one. Hillary? Hillary, you still awake?
She's asleep.
She might have dropped off.
Hillary broke her foot.
Yeah, she's injured, she had an accident, and so, she probably not still there. That's four, one. Show the vote, four, one. All right, now we'll move to item J8. John Frankovich, again, Mr. Mayor, on behalf of Reno Retail, and perhaps I can shortstop this. We have submitted to the council a request that we modify our existing agreement in light of current financial conditions. We recognize that there's difficult times on all sides of this, and difficult decisions to be made, and difficult issues at the city. We have, as we indicated in our restructuring, made significant concessions to partners, to tenants, to banks, in order to make this project go. That's what partners do. We've tried to make a fair proposal. We understand that there's still some issues that we need to address more fully. I'm confident that the council wants to do what's fair. So, what we'd like to do is have a little bit more time to work with your staff, to see if we can finalize the terms, because some of the terms that were submitted in this more recent, most recent proposal, have caused some issues, and we'd like to have an opportunity to address them, so I'd like this matter to be continued. Continued? Yes. Okay. Move to continue, do I have a second? Have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Show the vote unanimously. Thank you very much. All right, now we're, we're too early. Now, we'll go to the consent agenda. Mr. Eddie Lorton, would you like to speak on E4 and E5? First of all, is there any items you want to pull on the consent for discussion? Ms. Breckus?
Mr. Mayor, I would request that we pull E3, E11, and E12.
Any others? Mr. Lorton?
Okay. I ended up, Mr. Mayor, Eddie Lorton for the record. On E4, I was wondering if we're going to pay them $100,000 a year, or they're going to have a percentage basis of what they sell, so they have to perform, how's that going to work? Do we know? I guess we're going to pay up to $100,000 a year, but I'm not sure how we're going to do that. Where most auction companies get a percentage of what they sell, and so, do we know what we're going to do on that?
Staff?
For the record, Jill Olson Finance, the company will receive a percentage of the proceeds, we will not pay them unless there's an auction sale.
Excellent, that's what I needed to know, that's the way to do it. And then, here on, should I combine E5 or just wait?
No, come on, no, E5, I'm asking you up now.
Okay, excellent. Well, I would love for you to give them that $50,000, so we can finish fixing the fire hydrants, which I brought to light about two months ago. And then, we can be in code, because the code states that they have to be 600 feet apart for us to meet code. So, we got the money, chief, thank you, appreciate the job you do, and thanks, City Council, I hope they approve this, because safety means something. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Breckus, item E3.
I had a question about the resolution and the legal descriptions.
Do you want a motion to approve the remaining, the items not pulled, Mr. Mayor?
Excuse me?
Do you want a motion to approve the items not pulled?
Yes.
I'll make that.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Now, we're item, item E3.
Okay. There was a little bit of confusion I had reading the, matching up the exhibits with the resolution. The resolution says that the second therefore, the first party and second party, so that, it seems to say that in Exhibit 1 and Exhibit 2 is really the resultant properties. But when I read those exhibits, it seems to say, it doesn't seem to match that those are the resultant parcels. It says that particularly for Exhibit 2, it's the parcels to be conveyed. So, the first party to the second party is in Exhibit 2, and that's description of one parcel, and then the other one is second party to first party, and that's, that's a convey, that's the parcels to be conveyed. It's not, as it says in the resolution, that the real property owned by the first party shall be described, and then it says, the real property conveyed shall be described as Exhibit 2. Can you, can you just walk me through each of the exhibits?
For the record, Cheryl Lahoney, Public Works. I'm not familiar, intimately familiar with the legal descriptions themselves, those were prepared by a surveyor. I can tell you what the intention of the action is, probably more so than anything else.
Well, I get that, I'm just, I'm just really trying to confirm, do we have a city surveyor anymore who looks over the work that surveyors do for us, and just kind of runs closure and makes sure everything's all looking good?
We do, yes.
Okay, and, okay, because it seems confusing that Exhibit 1 is referenced, so someone did that, that, someone here, that person's not here right now, though.
Correct.
Okay, because it says that the real property owned by the first party shall be as described in Exhibit 1, okay? So, owned by the first party, and the first party is the-
The Masonic Temple Association.
Okay, so that's the, that's the new part. And then, the second is what's the real property to be conveyed, but what I'm seeing is, under Exhibit 2, we have first party to second party, second party to first party.
Correct.
So, it's not necessarily, it's inconsistent with what it's saying in the resolution.
The, the, the part that's conveyed, they're essentially remnants. If the, if the building is here, and the property line is here, we're basically turning the property line to match up with the existing building. There's a bust, so to speak, on the property boundary as described in, you know, 400 years of legal descriptions, and what is, where the building currently sits in space. This is a paper correction to align the property with the building. So, it has, conveyance is going both directions, because on one part, the property is outside of the building, and on the other part, the property is inside the building, if that makes sense.
I'm just not entirely sure, you know, having read these, probably not as much as you, and being as knowledgeable as surveying, that your resolution, which is essentially a quitclaim deed, right?
The deed, yeah.
Yeah, is matching up to your exhibits. So, you know, but you're not the one, you're just the one here today. So, I don't know, that was how it looked to me, and someone suggested that to me also, so maybe you could take a, take a look at that?
Sure, you bet.
I'll motion then. Yes.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. E11, Ms. Breckus?
Well, this one, there's a comment in here that really concerns me, and that is that, and I don't think this was presented to us previously, but maybe I missed it, is that if the construction of the Virginia Street Bridge necessitates the city contribution, that will come out of our street, neighborhood street program. Is that correct?
For the record, Cheryl Lahoney, yes, the city's street fund will front the money, so to speak, until the federal reimbursement kicks in, essentially.
Well, when I saw the budget for the Virginia Street Bridge, you know, I had a bottom number, and there were, I mean, I know, it's a reimbursement basement basis, but I thought that if it hits a certain number, city's going to pay for that money. Is that true?
Yes, that is also true. Once the bids come in, and we know what the actual budget is, we'll know at that time whether street funds will need to be allocated permanently for the project. But the intention is to, we have to pay the contractor, we're, we'll be under a contract with a contractor, we have to pay them in a timely manner. The process for requesting reimbursement is expected to take anywhere from 30 to 60 days. So, we can't wait to get the money from the state before we pay our contractor. So, street funds would be used to front that payment, basically.
Kind of a cash flow issue.
Correct.
Now, if RTC, who had $100 million in their cash in balance, was the project manager, we wouldn't be having this discussion about cash flow, correct?
I can't switch to that.
They probably have a little more money. My concern is that, when do your bids close?
Our bids haven't even opened. We're looking to go out to bid in the spring.
Okay, I thought it was by the end of the year, but my, so, say your number comes in, shows the city's obligation, necessitated, this work in Ward 1 cancels?
Oh, no, it doesn't cancel, it would delay only.
Would delay, okay.
Correct. If we can construct this in, later in the summer, we will. If we can't, it'll just delay to the following year.
Okay, well, I would really hope that at the annual budgeting of the R- Okay, well, I would really hope that at the annual budgeting of the RTC, that we could look to seek some of that money to, to fill this gap. 'Cause I hate to see our neighborhood street program delayed by this road, which is regional in nature. It is the ma- a major old thoroughfare into the regions downtown, and it has been distressing to me to see that our limited neighborhood funds are at jeopardy and, and possibly delaying. And at, one last question is, um, you said that in, um, 2012, September of 2012, the council programmed out for three years the, the neighborhood streets to be done. Is that how we usually do it, we go three years in advance?
Oh, sorry, go ahead. For the record, Cheryl Lahoney, yes, we typically do get several years in advance.
So when will you be coming to us again and letting us know what neighborhood streets are, you know, we're looking at?
Depending on when, which year these actually go. If, if we end up pushing the whole program for one year, we'll be out an extra year, so when, when would we be back? Carrie Kosky, Public Works, we'd probably be back with the, uh, the end of next year.
Okay, well, I'm, I'm distressed that we have the potential to postpone our neighborhood street work. It's, it's very distressing to me, and I, um...
Any other questions?
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Chisel, do you have any concerns with this recommendation or threats that have been suggested?
Robert Chisel, no, we do not.
Cheryl, entertain a motion?
Move to approve?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Show the vote covers unanimously. Your next one? Was?
The Bowler's Hall of Fame, is that a women's or a men's, or just both genders? Okay. And I didn't realize we were up to $638,000 for that scope of work. It brings up questions for me that, um, um, are we gonna have, is this going to be an ongoing obligation, the city? Is it gonna go under the cultural affairs, is it, or is it tied, how does it work? I'm, I'm just trying to, I didn't realize the Hall of Fame was such a big thing, and maybe I should go on a tour of it and understand what it is, 'cause I have not seen it. I don't know if other members of the council have gone on a tour of it. But do, do we have ongoing, are we plugging into the budget ongoing? You know, when you open a museum, you usually have obligations, and that's what I'm trying to get at.
Alan Tryon, Public Works. We will have ongoing obligations, um, at the bowling stadium. We will have projects probably through the next five years. Whenever the USBC comes into town, they wanna see something new. The, uh, Hall of Fame Museum, which is for men and women, was Phase 1. It was over $600,000.
I, I think the question was more, are there ongoing obligations because of the museum? I think was the question, correct?
Yeah, is it part of our cultural programs? I mean, are we thinking of it in that mindset, like the Arts and Cultural Division will be staffing it, or?
Uh, Robert Chisel, for the record. There was a contract that we had between the City of Reno, the RSCVA, and the USBC Bowlers that identified the $2 surcharge and how it would be utilized for the bowling stadium over a number of years as part of this USBC renegotiated contract. The Hall of Fame Museum was one of the items, the Kingpin Club was another item. The squad room, which is being done right now, refurbishment of the squad room was one of them. Again, I think her question was more, is there a staffing requirement, is there?
No.
Is there, is there?
No, no.
Right, that's, that's where I'm trying to, is it other, are there obligations that we have to absorb because we've opened this museum?
No.
No.
The, the RSCVA operates and maintains, uh, the operation of the bowling stadium. The bowling stadium is owned by the City of Reno, so we are responsible for capital improvements.
Under our relationship with them, they staff the museum?
Yes.
When, well, they staff it to the extent that when it's needed, there's a person that'll be there, or...
Is the name museum kinda confusing, and it's more really just an exhibit?
It's a Hall of Fame exhibit.
Okay, I think I'll...
You should come by.
Come by.
And again, this agenda item has nothing to do with the museum, it's specifically the flooring.
Yep. This is flooring for the squad room. Squad room is where the, the groups meet upstairs.
And it's because what was going to work is not, does not withstand the, um, demand, the weight-bearing, um, traffic on it.
Yep.
Move to approve?
Have a motion, second, all in favor say aye. Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Ms. Brackus, you had another one? That's it, okay. Alright, now we'll move to item F1. Before we go to F1, Mr. Eddie Lorton has something to say. Mr. Lorton? You said F1. You wanna say something on F1?
No.
I'm going to. You wrote F1 on your folder. Madam Secretary, have all the notices been sent?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, proper notice was given and no correspondence was received.
Okay. Item F1, lease purchase, lease to purchase, 450 St. Clair Street. Have a motion, do I have a second? Have a second? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Item F12.
Resolution number 7918, resolution approving the lease to purchase at the current appraised value the City of Reno's interest in certain real property located at 450 Sinclair Street, Reno, Nevada, to the Board of Regents of the Nevada System of Higher Education on behalf of the University of Nevada Reno pursuant to NRS 277.050 and providing for other matters properly related thereto.
Move to adopt.
Have a motion, second, all in favor say aye. Those that oppose, no, motion carries unanimously. Now we'll go to ordinance adoption, item G1.
Which is ordinance number 6310, an ordinance to amend Title 18, Chapter 18.08 of the Reno Municipal Code entitled Zoning. One rezoning 6,000 square feet of a 26,528,000 square foot parcel from MF30MH multi-family residential, 30 units per acre mobile home overlay to PAP public facility, and two, remove the MH overlay from the entire parcel together with other matters properly relating thereto.
Have a motion, the second, all in favor say aye. Those that oppose, no, motion carries unanimously. Item G2.
Which is ordinance number 6311, an ordinance amending the Reno Municipal Code Title 18, Annexation of Land Development, Chapter 18 point, eight, Chapter 18.02, General Provisions to Add Section 18.02.114 entitled Stay on the Acceptance of Land Use Applications Related to Medical Marijuana Establishments Within the Land Use Jurisdiction of the City of Reno Together With Other Matters Properly Relating Thereto.
Have a motion, second, all in favor say aye. Those that oppose, no.
No, Mayor, I'm, I'm, my reasons for, uh, saying no, I expressed at the introduction, so...
Okay, so we pass this 4 to 1. Alright, now there's no resolutions, now we'll go to ordinance introductions, I1. Okay. Let me, uh, call on Mr., uh, before we get into it. Does staff have something you want to say right now, because we got a couple people wish to speak?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, Michael Chomp, Business Relations Manager for the Business License Division. That's up to the council, if you want to...
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, let me go ahead. These items, item I1, point 1 through 1.6, again, these are items for First Amendment ordinance changes that we proposed, uh, back in October 9th. That's the, at the time when City Council sent us back to take a look at the City of Sparks ordinance relating to First Amendments. Deputy City Attorney Craig Scott did do that. After his review, he has incorporated a few changes in what we're gonna propose to the council today. Again, these six items, item I1, point 1 is the Business Impact Statement. 1.2 is the ordinance to amend Title 4 for the Business License Code. The big change with that one is that now there are two options. Option 1 continues to require a business license for folks, um, doing expressive art. The threshold that staff recommended at the previous meeting was a threshold of $600. That was a threshold that license would be required once they had gross receipts and amounts above that. We have now left that up to the City Council to either raise or lower that threshold. Uh, option 2 would be to exempt First Amendment expressive speech from the licensing requirement altogether. Item 1.3 is an amendment to, again, this is a, this is an amendment to Title 5. This is a new, uh, a new change where we are adding free speech areas and designated areas in special events. Item 1.4, no real change, or a few, um, changes that Mr. Scott will, will expand on. And I1.5, again, is a change to 515. And item 1.6 is an amendment to 8.23, this is the Parks, uh, Parks Ordinance and Title Parks and Recreation. This ordinance, uh, and the change allows, um, artists to, um, conduct their expressive speech and art in the parks. So with that, I'm gonna defer, um, to questions, and Mr. Scott will add in the, uh, the blanks.
Mr. Scott, you have something?
Yes, I do, Your Honor. And, Mr. Mayor, I still say, "Your Honor." That'll work.
That's also nice, I've been called worse.
Yes. Craig Scott from the Reno City Attorney's Office. I had a couple of points that I wanted to, um, make before I pretty much opened it up to questions. One of the things is that in the staff report on, uh, the amendments to Chapter 8.23, which is the Parks Amendment, there are some proposed, um, findings in there of, um, significant municipal interest, city interests. And, um, I, I would ask that those findings be, uh, included and adopted by council. Another point on the business licenses, um, we do have the options of either having, imposing a business license or not imposing a business license, that's a policy question. Either route will be legal, as for the, um, imposition of a business license, we have at this point left a blank there. If you choose to impose a business license, we're asking you to set a, a threshold amount that a, a person exercising their First Amendment rights, um, as part of their business would gain in income, because this is a business license. That threshold, I think, would be a balance between the goal of encouraging artists and other free expression people versus the traditional, um, revenue-raising purpose of business licenses. So that would be the, kind of the two factors you could look at in trying to determine that threshold amount. The last part is that, uh, as based on the review and the comparison with the Sparks, um, ordinances, there's a memo in there that talks about them, so we've, we've gone through there, and I think I've pointed out that they're substantially the same. One of the things that they had that we don't have yet was a free speech area in our special events. And that's a, a good idea. It's a good idea for a lot of reasons, and I strongly encourage you to do that. I did find out something today that I need to make you aware of. The ordinance talks about a, uh, particular stretch on Third Street for special events on Virginia Street. It's a gravel area right along the railroad tracks there. I have, this morning, found out that that is, um, um... How do we track, um... What's our rehabilitation, or, uh... Thank you. I'm forgetting the name of it, Your Honor, it's the, oh, redevelopment, it's, it's redevelopment property. So we would have to get permission, um, from City Council in your capacity as the redevelopment board to turn that into a rede- a, um, spree, free speech area. If that permission isn't granted, we would have to make a change. If it is granted, then we can work with that and make sure that there are safeguards for flexibility for the future. Basically, with those comments, I'd be open to any questions you may have.
Okay. Before we go to questions, I'm gonna have the people that wish to speak. Ted Levatter? You can speak on these, you're speaking on item I1 through I6. Stephen, I'm gonna call you last. David Tetcher?
Good afternoon again, Your Honor.
How are you?
Just fine, I hope everybody's well. Uh, for the record, my name is David Shekar, I'm an independent artist. I'm commenting on the, uh, sidewalk vendors, artists, and performers. And that is Section 5.15.100. It's the, uh, there's 12 items there. And... Basically, this is a, this is a good ordinance here. It has very good common sense laws, it says things like, uh, what you could do and what you can't do. You can't block an entrance, you can't, uh, you know, you can't yell to people in the car to, to buy stuff. Gotta make sure you don't block the road for pedestrians. All makes sense, except however, I have a, an issue with two of those, and my suggestion, sir, is to amend them, specifically where it says on 5.15.100, "A, vendors and persons engaged in expressive speech or conduct on sidewalks shall not," item 6, "engage in or carry on the business of vending or expressive vending between the hours of 10:00 PM and 7:00 AM." And then it just says, "Vending cart and all related equipment, merchandise must be removed from public property during non-vending hours." The issue that I have, and I think it's an issue that the city should really consider, sir, is to, uh, realize that you can absolutely, without any doubt, constitutionally and lawfully, you can require this restriction for commercial vendors. If you guy, if they have a hot dog, stand out there, you could restrict the hours, uh, from 10:00 AM to 6:00 PM. But let's think about this, sir, this is a 24-hour town, and in the summer, after 10:00 PM, it's kinda like, uh, the other times when it's around 7:00 PM. I make, try to make some money, drawing pictures of tourists, uh, at my easel, on the downtown sidewalks in the summer, especially in, uh, the summertime. I'm looking at the clock, I only got a few seconds. My suggestion, sir, and I appreciate any questions, because this is an item that if it is passed, it could subject the city to, uh, the liabilities of federal district court. I would suggest changing the, uh, number 6 to engage in or carry the, carry on the business of vending. Just make it commercial vending, sir, uh, but not expressive vending, because as an artist, I have a right to, uh, take a picture of the arch after 10:00 PM. That's a protected First Amendment activity. I also have, uh, the right as a citizen, protect it, fully protected by the First Amendment, to draw a picture of the guy taking a picture of the arch at, at 10:00 PM. And if you restrict my, uh, ability to do that, it would be a problem for the city the federal district court got involved, but it doesn't have to if you could amend that.
Thank you very much.
So may I request your permission to speak?
No, sir.
I beg your pardon?
No, sir, you're through.
Good, thank you, Your Honor.
Mr. Sam Dene?
Sam Dene, the Encyclopedia Reno Government, I'm gonna be very brief. I agree with virtually everything that that man said. And to make it as brief as possible, I am against this new ordinance for the people out in TB land. Anything that is that long has to have something in it that is wrong. And the gobbledygook, and nothing against the city attorney over there, but the gobbledygook that's involved in this for the citizen sitting in the audience or who may receive this at home is pure gobbledygook, and I would defy anybody, even on this council, to explain what is being written there. And by the way, Mr. Cachelle was absolutely right, that was not star bonds. The Summit Sierra was, it was not star bonds, but for every effective aspect of it, it was star bonds. They got $10 million in tax breaks, but anyway, that's off of the subject. They did, what? No, they got $10 million in, in free, in, in infrastructure building that they got, they didn't have to, they got kickbacks for.
See, and this goes to show you how uneducated you are on the items that are here. They have not received $10 million.
They didn't receive it, they didn't have to pay it. Their taxes were reduced, so they didn't have to pay it.
They spent $10 million in public improvements and have asked for a reimbursement agreement to get paid back for those public improvements, and they're not getting it paid back because the money's not there. So they have not gotten it.
Well, they have not, you have not agreed not to give it back to them, let's put it that way.
I'm sorry?
You have not agreed to not give it back to them. Anyway, I don't wanna go on to that subject. Right now, we're talking about... Right now, we're talking about freedom of speech, the freedom of speech, and I think that what these folks are doing are freedom of speech. I'm number one for freedom of speech. And even when I'm wrong, even when I'm wrong, I have the right to come to this podium, and if assuming he's correct, I am wrong, maybe I'm not. I know that those people got kickbacks, and I don't wanna get upside down with those people, but those guys got special deals to build the Summit Sierra.
Thank you very much. Mr. Stephen White.
Well, here we are again, aren't we?
Yes, sir.
You know, I think the biggest problem that the city is having, and cities are having all over the country, is the very first thing you have to do is identify who an artist is. You know, I see this up here, First Amendment Artisan Code. I'm not an artisan. An artisan is a crafter that works in the trades and produces functional merchandise. Artists do not produce functional merchandise. I have to ask, uh, you know, here are some basic guidelines. In order to write a code that regulates the right to freedom of speech or artistic self-expression, first off, you have to define who it is you're regulating. Who is a First Amendment-protected artist? Who, what is First Amendment-protected art? What is the difference between an artist and artist, uh, artwork and commercial merchandise? Because art, my art is not commercial. The Ninth Circuit's make it very clear, my art is not commercial even when I sell it for profit. My right to sell my artwork is also protected by the First Amendment. It's not a privilege subject to a city license. It's a constitutional right. Now, commercial speech is not fully protected by the First Amendment. You can regulate the heck out of commercial speech. The standard for a city to regulate commercial speech is merely that you have a compelling interest in order to regulate commercial speech. In order to regulate fully protected speech, such as my artwork, you have to have a compelling need for each and every restriction that you put in place. That need has to outweigh my right to freedom of speech, you see. It has to be a compelling need. It's a much higher standard. The City of Sparks made the, uh, the mistake of trying to say that I had to have a business license, and the whole lawsuit was, you know, was all about that. That the Ninth Circuit in the last paragraph point out that they made a mistake. They didn't put me in their exemption clause of their business license code. Mr. Skow and the city attorney would have you believe that you can separate the sale of the artwork from the display of the artwork, that somehow you can license the sale of the artwork where you can't license the display of it. In the October 16th meeting, Mr. Skow pointed out to you, you must allow the sale of First Amendment-protected materials on public forums. You must allow it. It's a constitutional right. It isn't that you can apply a license and then threaten me with citations, fines, arrest, confiscation of my artwork, and imprisonment because I don't get your license. You must allow it. It's a constitutional right, you see. And that's the difference. But if you can't define the difference between an artist and a commercial vendor, do any of you know the difference? Can you explain to me? Can Mr. Skow tell me not only who an artist is, not an artescent, but an artist is, what fine art is that's protected by the First Amendment, and what is the key factor that makes it rise to the full level of protection by the First Amendment where commercial speech does not? Can I explain that to you, or am I limited?
I'll give you another minute. You're starting to repeat yourself. I'll give you another minute.
Okay. Um, kinda lost track here. The fine arts as defined by the Ninth Circuit Court are painting, first off, rule number one, so long, and I'm quoting the Ninth Circuit, so long as it an artist's self-expression, it will be protected by the First Amendment, not somebody else's expression. Number one, it has to be self-expression. Number two, it must fall into the categories of painting, sculpture, photography, drawing, engraving. Stained glass windows is art for art's sake. I brought one. This is not a functional window. It hangs in front of a window. It's art for art's sake. Music, theater, dancing, films. What do they all have in common? They have no functional purpose at all. They're purely expressive. That's how a police officer on the street can make that determination. That's how all you can make the determination. If you remember the last time I came, I brought a beautiful hand carved walking staff, and I pointed out to you, it's beautiful, but it's, and it's handmade, but it's not art. It has a functional purpose. If this stained glass window was mounted in a window frame, meant to be a window, it would not be art. It would be functional merchandise. It would be commercial. You see what I mean? And when you narrow it down to fine art and legitimate fine artists, suddenly, all these problems go away. There aren't that many fine artists out there, folks. They're not gonna overrun your sidewalks and your parks and all that.
Thank you very much.
And instead, would we please, let's work towards encouraging fine art in our communities.
Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Appreciate it. Bring him back to the table.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, um, I'll start. I sat through several of these discussions with the, as the liaison to the Arts, um, Parks Commission, and, uh, so a little familiar. And, uh, we have, uh, well, okay, are we gonna deal with a business impact statement, or is that our obligation to deal with first? No, 'cause we did that before, correct?
Tracy Chase, Reno City Attorney's Office. Yes, you have to pass the business impact statement and, and make the findings set forth there in first.
Mr. Mayor, on that, on that note, I'll go ahead and move to accept the business impact statement and find that the adoption of the ordinances does not impose a direct and significant economic burden upon a business in order directly restrict the formation or expansion of the business.
Okay. Have a motion second. Any further discussion?
No.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, if I may be recognized, um, we have before us, um, two options, which would be dropped into, um, our general section related to businesses, um, and it, it seems to be the first, uh, you know, in the series of the code book, it's the first one that comes in. And, um, I'm inclined to go with number two, um, but I would like to, um, call Mr. White up in a moment, but first I have a question for Mr. Skow or Mr. Chomp with this. I'm reading where this would drop into code, the business, uh, Title IV Business License Code. It's Option 2, and it's a new section, 4.04.025. Um, I'm wondering why, uh, the section that would be, um, preceding that, or no, actually, it'd be the, yes, it would be, no, following that, correct?
Right.
It would be, um, I'm sorry, 'cause I've got the code book in front of me, and you're just giving us a section. Sometimes planning gives us the whole title when they do things. I can see why they do it. Okay. So 4.04, double O seven, has business definition, correct? And it also has, as a sub, the business or doing business do not include, and it says, being a 501(c)(3), being a government, your wages as an employee. Why did you drop in an exception into that provision rather than this 4.04.025 where you say there's a business license exception for gross receipts from excessive speech or conduct in public forum? Um, and so I'm, I'm wondering how you ca, came about that, 'cause it would, it seemed to somehow apply that then it's a business. Do you, do you feel that this is best craftsmanship?
There is a, a couple of reasons why I chose to make this a separate provision. One was that, um, the Reno Arts and, and, uh, Culture Commission requested and, um, council-directed that we try and provide some clarity, and one of the big issues that the, uh, community, art community was having was whether or not they needed a business license. So by separating that out and dealing with it separately, that helped achieve council's purpose of making that point clear, um, that they either do or they don't require a business license. The other reason it's in there at all, because arguably, we don't need anything, because the activity of selling, um, is, uh, conducting business, and therefore, arguably, we wouldn't even need to have anything in it all, but this does clarify it, and it also gives you the opportunity to raise the threshold, which would also help promote expression.
One, under Option 2.
Uh, if you go under Option 2. If you go under Option 1, it, it goes away entirely.
Yeah, I, and I get that. Okay. Mr. White, have you read all the ordinances we have today? Have you, have you read all of, have you read all of the ordinances that we have before us today?
I haven't read this most recent one that they've come up with yet, but, but there are.
You need to go to the mic.
Yeah.
Yes. Come up the mic and introduce yourself again.
Um, no, I haven't read this particular version of the ordinance that we've come up with.
Introduce yourself.
I'm sorry?
Announce your name, and then address her.
Okay. My name's Stephen White, artist advocate, and, um, no, I haven't read the actual code that is presented to you today.
Okay.
I've, I've read many versions of it.
I know, and I've received many emails from you in response to those earlier versions, but I feel like we're at the point where we, um, responding to the arts community are ready to take action, and, um, and it would be helpful if you had opinions on this. I am inclined to go with the number 2, um, and I don't know, um, maybe we should see where the other five go, where we go with the other five, but it may be possible that if today we can only bring in one section, this may be the most appropriate, 'cause it sets out that larger framework, but I'll, I'll send it over to the others. They have to say.
Yeah, and, and clearly, I prefer Option 1. I just wanna have a couple of questions for staff. We've got staff coming up.
Good to know you, Mr. Skow.
We meet at last.
Mr. Skow and I have been doing battle, intellectual battle for years.
We've been talking for years. How do you do?
Under Option 1, and then we need to define the amount, is, is what we're looking for on that?
Yes.
And you got, and, and staff's recommended the $600. My biggest concern is enforcement. How do we, how do we enforce that?
Like all the other, um, thresholds, it's, it can be difficult. It would have to be an audit process of some sort, but mostly, it's gonna be an honor, honor process.
But do we have the right to audit? I mean, how do we?
Yes, we do.
If someone, if someone is selling art, we have a, how do we audit them?
We would ask for receipts, tax returns, anything to substantiate the, uh, sales.
Now, the $600 threshold, do we have that same threshold for any other vendors that, that, that sell?
No.
Commercially?
No, we do not.
So why would we, why would we have that on this?
Um, the, the threshold of 600 came from the, um, and the way we included that was...
I guess where you got the number, but, but why would we have the threshold at $600 for this commercial activity and not for any other commercial activity? Why are we, why are we?
We based that on, on the request, and I'll let Mr. Skow answer that, but primarily, the community was asking for, uh, a, a firm number, some sort of number, some sort of threshold, and that's how we determined that. I don't know if you had to add to that.
Craig Skow, again, from City Attorney's Office. The number, a number was chosen for two purposes. One was, there was a request so that, uh, the art community would have, uh, more specificity and know exactly what was required of them. Number two, um, it, a specific number does provide you with the opportunity as a policy matter, um, and this was something that the Arts and Culture Committee wanted, uh, to encourage art with the city, and thereby, you could create a higher threshold if you wanted to. So that was pretty much the, uh, the reasoning behind it.
I, I guess my biggest concern is just the enforceability of it. I mean, I, I honestly think we've either gotta say everyone has to get a business license if they're gonna sell, or nobody. I, I mean, I, I just think enforcing that provision is gonna be almost impossible.
Uh, yeah, we, we did give some thought to that, and indeed, it would be difficult. There are a large number of laws that are on the books that are very difficult to enforce. That doesn't mean we shouldn't have them.
That doesn't mean we should put more that are on books that are difficult to enforce.
The other side of that is that if there is something going on that is suspected, because the parks people know pretty much who's doing what in their parks, then we could actually, um, conduct a sting or simply observation and get testimony or information from people who just engaged in a transaction.
And what's it, what's it cost for a business license like this?
Uh, the license itself is $60 for the first $20,000, and then I forget the graduated scale after that.
Just the regular business license fees? Just our normal business license fees?
Yeah. The First Amendment standard is that we, um, can't have an amount that would, uh, be so excessive that it would, uh, chill the person's ability to express themselves, and the second is that it not be discriminative, and that's why we...
Right, I, I understand. So my, my preference would be that we just require them to have a business license. If they're gonna sell, as I've said before, anybody that wants to go out and paint, sit in the park and paint, or whatever art they wanna perform, they're allowed to do on public property. But if they're gonna conduct business, I think they should have to have a business license. And I think, I think trying to put a threshold that if they have to meet a $600 or a $1,000 before they have to get their business license, I think, I, I, I think that's gonna be impossible to enforce that.
Oh, I do too.
So I...
If I may, one other factor might bear on this, and that would be the defense of the action. Um, the, the specific number, because it does provide clarity, avoids what is, uh, a little bit, uh, more difficult to understand in terms of when a license becomes due right now. Um, under the commercial, um, standards of, of testing an ordinance, there can be, um, more ambiguity, if you will, but the First Amendment requires a lot of specificity, so by providing this specificity, I think we, we help ourselves in, in defending any potential lawsuit.
So you're saying I can't make it, everybody has to have a license?
I would prefer that we have a specific amount for defending it.
At zero.
For $60.
Not at zero, 'cause then you would fail the constitutional test that you, uh, you chill speech. Um, that, that creates a burden, because they'd have to pay a license before they even had any income, and that would mean nobody would express themselves, so that, that would not fly.
See, I, I just, Mr. Mayor, if I...
Go ahead.
May, I, I think that, in all respect, Councilmember Dorch, I think you're confusing this com, commercial business license construct with the First Amendment.
I'm not confusing anything.
I, I disagree. I, I think that, um, you know, wanting to be uniform, and he just challenged, said, "Don't go uniform," shows a, a misunderstanding. Um, I'm concerned that you have had conversations, Mr. Skow, with a representative from the ACLU who has seen these drafts, and that person tells you that from their opinion, as, you know, people who live within the First Amendment, essentially, and the other ones, that Option 1 would not be legally defensible, and you, your office disagrees with that. That's right. Correct, is that true?
Uh, that is correct. When we heard back from the ACLU after many, many months, they came in with, um, after reviewing all of this, with three proposals. Two of them were, um, with the, um, park restrictions, uh, for instance, if, uh, you, the police have to move people to, um, uh, prevent obstruction of a, of a location. Uh, they wanted us to add a provision that we not move them any further than is reasonably necessary, and so I did that. Those were easy. There was absolutely no analysis at all of White versus, um, the City of Sparks, and I can tell you, um, I'm comfortable to, I would say, a 90 degree, uh, of certainty that we can do this, and that their analysis of White versus Sparks, they, they didn't do it. Um, and the, so, I, yeah, there is certainly a risk, and that is something to consider, but I think the risk is minimal. Um, the, the interpretations of White are, uh, being espoused by Mr. White, who initially went to the ACLU and brought their interest. My concern would be that they may have simply done a facial look at it without going in any depth at all.
Okay.
So, based on, based on that, I, I guess we will have to put that number in there, although I think, I still think it's, it's very, gonna be...
Can we, can we understand the rationale again behind the arbitrary 600? How was that arrived at?
It's my understanding, from looking at the, um, the ordinance for business license as it currently exists, and a duty to, um, get a business license arises when you reach the level when you are, are required to file a profit and loss statement with the IRS, and so that is roughly $600, and so that's my understanding of where the $600 has been coming from.
And in addition to that $600 number, that is a number that the IRS uses when they issue a 1099 form? So that's how we arrived at that number. Currently in the code, a little bit to Councilman Dorch's, um, question, um, it, it reads, a license is required once they reach the cost of a license, and that created so much confusion, because the cost of the license is based on gross revenue, which is difficult to quantify. So that's why the threshold of 600, or whatever that threshold is, helped to make it clear that when you reach this amount of gross revenues for the sale of your merchandise or your art, or whatever it is, um, that would trigger you to come in and get your license. For any other commercial, home-based type business... any other commercial, home-based type business, it is once you're conducting business, if you want to conduct business within the city limits of Reno, you're required to get a business license.
Right.
For that.
Right.
That business.
If I may, and Craig Skow, there, one other factor to come up with is that the courts have, uh, would punish us if we made the threshold lower than for thresholds for other businesses, but the courts, um, have looked favorably on, uh, a, a, um, an ordinance that actually favors expression, so that's why it's okay to have something different, legally different, different from the other businesses, um, as long as it favors expression.
Okay. So based on that, I mean, I would, I, I'll.
Wait one minute. I want to let Mr. White say something real quick. Mr. White?
Okay. Thank you. I appreciate you letting me respond.
Um, let me implicate the Fourteenth Amendment, equal protection clause under the Fourteenth Amendment. If you're going to require a license of artists, then you also have to require a license of people that are engaged in particularized message speech, political and religious groups that express themselves and sell merchandise that is inextricably intertwined with a particular political, philosophical, or ideological or religious message. That's under the Gaudi of H. Nebo Society ruling. You know, you're really, you're dealing with three separate forms of protected speech. You cannot, you cannot not license nonprofit religious and political groups when they sell their First Amendment protected material on public property, and then expect an artist to get a license for doing exactly the same thing. Reed Perry versus LAPD, they lost, you know, LA lost because they did not offer Artist Perry the same exemption under their business license code that they offered to nonprofit groups. Reed, here's, here's one for you, quote from the Second Circuit Court of Appeals in Berry versus New York. "New York City argued this very point from Mr. Skow, argued the very same point before the Second Court, uh, Circuit Court," and I quote, "Artists are free to display their artwork publicly without a license. They merely cannot sell it." They went on to say, "Artists, in order to be constitutionally protected, must be inseparably intertwined with a particular message," but White versus Sparks ruling shot that whole thing down, and artists doesn't have to have a particular message.
Okay.
Nonprofit religious groups do, under the Gaudi ruling, okay? The Second Circuit's response to their argument was.
Wrap it up now. I'm not going all day.
The Second Circuit argument to their, or, or response to their argument was, "These arguments must fail. The sale of First Amendment protected materials is also protected."
Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you for letting me respond, sir.
Yes, you're welcome.
Please ask me questions, too, because.
If I have, we'll ask you. Thank you very much. Mr. Dorch?
Yeah, so based, based on staff's comments, I mean, I would, I would prefer option one, and we can, I guess we'll use the $600 number. Um, I, I think it's going to be difficult to enforce. I mean.
Oh, I do too.
I'd like to, I mean, we'll try it out for a while and maybe get a report back on, on the effectiveness and how it's operating, but, um, I, uh, I, I do have some concerns, but I think that's the direction we need to go. It's my personal opinion.
Do I have a second?
Well, I don't know if that was a motion, was it?
I can certainly make it a motion.
I, I'd just like to add that, oh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Well, Mr. White's last point about the Fourteenth Amendment and equal protection, I, I think has merit, being a non-attorney. I mean, we say here in our code, "Doing business, or the term business, does not include activities conducted by or for the exclusive benefit of organizations that are essentially 501(c)(3)'s, including, not limited to, organizations operated for religious, charitable, scientific, literary, education, or fraternal purposes." So, you know, if the First Amendment activity is religion and it is speech, we're treating different ways of exercising that First Amendment differently, and that makes me concerned. I would like to see within that one, the exception in there for individuals exercising their First Amendment speech, uh, right, you know, as, and through expressive arts. And so that would, um, I think, and Mr. Skow just said, the courts prefer the least burden on expressive, um, First Amendment exercise. So.
Okay.
I think option two is really going in the wrong direction, and we will be living with this much longer, uh, through a litigation.
Option two's going in the wrong way, or one?
Option one, Mayor, I'm sorry.
Okay.
So, so, Mr. Mayor, I'll.
I have a motion.
Yeah, I'll go ahead and move. Well, I guess we need to read it, the ordinance.
Well, no, let's get them.
I need to know.
Let me get a second first. Let me get.
So you want to.
I, I think we need to have a.
So I know what a motion is to which of the two options, then I can read the ordinance.
I'll move that we insert, I'll move that we insert option one into the ordinance with the threshold of $600.
Okay, I, I have a second.
I have some questions.
For more discussion. Yeah. We need more discussion.
I have some questions relative to, um, and maybe it's from code, as to what the, what the volume of, of these types of activities are occurring in our parks, um, currently.
I can tell you what the volume of licensed artists are. We have about five, um, artists that are actually licensed through the division. As far as activity in parks, I don't know that. I don't know if, Craig, do you know anything about?
Can you tell me of those five, what, what, what art they are?
We don't track the type of art that they're doing. That, the fact that they're artists and they felt they would met that threshold that's currently in our code, voluntarily came in and got licensed.
And there's no way to track those that aren't licensed, performing art in our parks?
No, it makes it much more difficult.
So I'm guessing, so my question is, by imposing a business license on those that you've identified as performing and maybe selling art in a park, we're not even identifying those that aren't licensed now?
Correct. We're, we're not actively out there chasing artists around. That's correct. Um, i- in the community that, you know, when we, when we first started this discussion, the licensing, whether to license or not to license, didn't seem to be their big issue. It was the confusion of when is it required, and they needed the clarity to, uh, in code, so they understood when they read it that, that they needed a license or they, or they didn't need the license.
Yeah.
If I may, Craig Skow from the City Attorney's Office, just in your consideration of this, I don't want to mislead you at all. When I said 90% comfort level, that is with the holding, that the holding in White versus City of Sparks does not prevent us, on a First Amendment basis, from, from doing a business license. Um, there are a lot of different ways to approach and attack a license. I think we're good. I'm going to lower my threshold there to about a 50 or 60%, probably in terms of, of saying something could be out there. Um, so I know this is a heavily litigated area in the First Amendment area, maybe a little higher. I'll go 60 to 70%. But, um, again, I won't, the lie didn't say, or lie, I won't misrepresent you and say that there is a guarantee that this, um, business license can imposition is going to be upheld. In my best judgment, it is, but I can't make a guarantee on that.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
To follow along with Councilmember Jarden's questions, that's something that occurred to me through the discussions at the Parks Commission, is there's not a lot of folks out doing this. And so for me, knowing that so few people are doing this, and it is a highly contested area of litigation, I was just comfortable with more or less what's in two is just not licensing this thing. I, when the artists came and talked beyond Mr. White, uh, who don't live here, who does not live here, I understand, they say, "Look, when we're doing art, um, and things are going great, we get represented in galleries, we have shows, and, you know, we, we do get licensed and go off into other venues, and it becomes commercial and expressive." So I would strongly, uh, recommend that we take this business definition, uh, that I read previously of the business and doing business not include, and somehow carve into there an exception that puts this expressive art on a same-level playing field with the exception we give to those who are exercising their religious First Amendment, and, uh, and, and leave it at that.
Mr. Mayor, we've heard some references to the LA Perry, I think it was, in a New York case. I think it would be helpful for us, I think we need still some additional information. You probably have looked at those cases, and that's how you developed your confidence level, um, but we don't know that process that you went through and how you made that analytical determination. So I think that we need to be able to see, okay, so which cases are out there, including the, the local, the White one, um, and let us see kind of that matrix of, this was the action taken for what reasons, and the court decision that was made. I think that would be helpful for us to be able to, um, make that analytical jump ourselves.
That would be important. Uh, I can understand and, and appreciate that. It is a very complex area, and the Berry case that, um, Mr. White just referred to in, in the Second Circuit in New York, that was essentially overturned. Um, they entered into a consent decree, but the subsequent case basically held just the opposite of Berry, so.
And that's exactly what I'm asking for us to see. I mean, you've gone through volumes of, of reading on this. I get that. We need a one-pager, in essence, that shows us the four or five cases that have been referenced that seem to be, um, you know, the spirit that we can hold on to or not for providing, um, a reasonable ordinance, and let us see what the action was that was initiated, the court action that was taken in any future, so that we can see the process that went through, and what the similarities were or were not.
Yeah, uh, just for council's information, I had indicated that, uh, we would be in the process of preparing a guidebook for, um, artists and enforcement personnel. I, I'm in that process already and have some of those summaries of those cases already, so that is something I can certainly provide the council.
I'm wondering if we shouldn't postpone this. We've got a bunch of questions still to ask and question, things staff needs to answer to us, and I, personally, I think we, we could be here all day debating this. I think we should postpone it until a future date.
Mr. Ram, can I make one quick comment?
You don't know how to make a quick comment. Get up here.
No, just one second.
Get up here.
Um, I want to, let's bring this back to kids again. Folks, kids can't get business licenses. Business licenses are a form of intimidation, and you, if you're talking about other artists that have gone out and gotten licensed because they don't know that they don't have to have a license. Kids can't get licenses. How do we encourage public, you know, participation in the arts? How do we get kids involved in the arts if we're going to license people? And Mr. Um, Dorch, you were right. There's no way to, um, no way to implement this thing. You can't. And, and one more thing. If there isn't a compelling need for a license before you make $600, what the heck is the compelling need after you make $600?
Thank you very much.
Is there some time sensitivity to this?
The only sensitivity is that currently in Title V, license is required based on making more than the cost of a license. So, so to say that it's, it's not required now, it is required now. We're trying to correct that. Um, and if I could address Councilwoman Breckus's definition in Business License Code on Nonprofits, um, it also says in there they have to be registered as 501(c)(3)'s. So for my division to recognize them as nonprofits, they have to be registered with the Internal Revenue Service and with the state of Nevada, then they would be exempt from licensing.
Okay. Mr. Dorch? No, sir. Not right now. Thank you. I think we've gotten enough input.
Yeah, I mean, I, I, I mean, I guess I'm okay with a, with a continuous. I don't know how many times we want to continue this thing and bring it back. I mean, the issue's still the same. It's, do we want to require a license or not?
Yeah.
I mean, that's really what it comes down to, and it's a policy decision. It's what staff's telling us. It's a policy decision on this table.
Right.
If we want to require a license or not. I mean, that's, I mean, that's, I mean, that's really what it comes down to. I mean, I know we can get some additional questions, maybe some answers to some other court cases, but at the end of the day, I'm still going to rely upon my attorney to tell me whether he thinks that the ordinance is legal or not.
Right.
And he's saying it's legal either way. We do it, so then it comes back to, do we want to require a license, or do we not want to require a license? And keep in mind, this, this is in my, for me, it's nothing against artists. My daughter's an artist, an exceptional artist, and I think there's people at this table that can contest to that, is an exceptional artist and teaches art in Washoe County School District. This isn't against artists. It's, it's a fact of, this, in my opinion, is a commercial activity, and if you're going to have a commercial activity, you need to have a business license and be treated the same as other people. I've, I've heard your argument against that.
Yeah.
I disagree with you. So that's what it comes down to for me. I might be on the losing end of that, but that's what it comes down to for me.
But, sir, you don't get to make the rules. I need you to watch.
I, I.
Sir, sir, one more interruption, and I'm going to ask you to leave the room. Okay?
So that's what it comes down to, to me, to me, is, I, I mean, it's really going to come back. If it comes back to us a month down the road, it's still going to be, do we want to have a business license, or do we not want to have a business license? I mean, that's what it, that's what I think it comes down to.
Well, I mean, I'm prepared to make a motion that we don't have a license, and then work with that concept from the subsequent ordinances that follow, and because we'd have to look at that, and I haven't, I don't know if making that threshold decision dictates the drafting of those now, but it would be some movement in some minor way, and, um, perhaps useful to move this along, and I, I share your concern that we've been, I, I mean, I remember, this came up.
Right.
Like last November, um, then it went down to the Parks Commission, and I, I participated there. So I'm prepared to make that motion that we do not require an ordinance. We don't drop, uh, excuse me, a business license. We don't move toward drafting an ordinance right now. We have staff come back with the understanding that that decision has been made from a policy perspective, and then bring us what other ordinances you feel would fall in line with that. That's.
Isn't that just option two?
Well, no, because option two, is it?
Isn't that just option?
Yeah, it, it more or less is option two, but option two is in a draft format, and I'm just saying, you know, not, just conceptually work on it, because this is one of six ordinances. So, um, uh, or I could go with the, um, with the ordinance as drafted for option two. Uh, so, um, I, I'll make that a motion.
I have a motion. Do I have a second? As from the lack of a second?
Then I'll motion to continue this.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to continue?
And I don't know which meeting we should continue it to. Perhaps we should, um.
Do we have to give a date?
It's. Staff, you understand some of this still gray areas that we're trying to close in on?
We do. We just, I want to understand, what would you like us to bring back?
I'll let.
That's different.
Councilmember Zadra, I think, probably specifies that.
If that case, reviewing that, um, case that you mentioned is.
The New York, the LA, correct. Um, the highlights of the, the Sparks case.
Okay.
Um, so you tell us, what's the, what's the time that you need to prepare that review
We'd like to bring it back, um, at least by December 11th, I think, is the next meeting
for us?
we could actually get on.
Is that enough time?
Mr. Mayor, Tracy Chasery, New York City Attorney's Office. The December 11 staff reports, I think, are, um, due very quickly here, if not, um, today.
Move it to the end of January meeting.
Yeah, is there some end of the.
When we come back in January.
Okay. Councilwoman Breckus, if you're doing this, you're going to continue all five ordinances?
Well, I need to, I think we need to, to throw that up to the rest of the body, um, but I think, I think we would.
Yeah.
Correct?
Well, that's what I wanted to be clear on. I would assume you probably want to do this as a package.
Yeah.
It seems to be, make more sense than to piecemeal it, just do it all as one package.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. Mr. White, please read the ordinances and give us some feedback between now and January.
The, um, sir, she didn't call you up.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you very much.
She addressed me.
She addressed you, but she didn't ask you to come speak.
Mr. Mayor, I'd just like to say, I, I'd be more than happy to work with Mr. Skow in that period of time.
Now, we have a motion, and we have a second.
What do you say?
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no, and we hope that staff will reach out to Mr. White and any other artists to make sure you got their points and look at it, and, uh, stuff like that.
Let's do it for the kids, Mayor.
All right. Now, where do we go? Yes, we have a 2:30.
Let's, let's get it together, work together, okay, Mr. Skow?
Yeah, what is J1? Yeah, item J1, and then we'll get to, to the RTC.
Tampa.
Flood. Okay, yes. J1. Update discussion potential direction of staff regarding annexation policy, requesting pro-rata contributions of advert loan tax and associated annexation application fees. Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, Nathan Gilbert, Associate Planner, for the record. Would you like a brief overview, or?
No, we don't. No, we don't need it.
I think we had this explained to us previously.
Yeah.
I'm available for any questions.
Okay. Chair, entertain a motion. Have a second?
Yeah.
Have a second, all in favor, say aye. Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. All right, now we will go to item...
D1.
D1, Local Rate Plan, Jay Aldine, Director of the Truckee River Flood Management Authority. Sorry, accuse you of being RTC for a second.
Well, actually, they're a class outfit. I've been working with them very closely for the last couple of months, so I actually take it as a compliment. Members of the City Council, Jay Aldine, Executive Director of TRFMA, actually, I've got some good news for you. I believe that we are going to hold our Civil Works Review Board in DC in December, which means that it's the last milestone conference for, prior to the Corps getting a completed chief's report. And I believe that we'll get that chief's report in time for the Word of Bill. They are in conference now between the House and the Senate. Senator Reed's staff is working with us directly and we believe that we will be in the Word of Bill by reference, which is something that we actually didn't think was going to happen. But due to the work of the Corps, the work of our politicians, our lobbyists and our staff, I think we are all there. With that, what I'm here today to do is give you an update on what we call the Local Rate Plan. It is the plan that defines the overall project that gets built in this area. And I just pressed the button, where's the clerk? There you go. Do I just press the button?
Mr. Aldine, before we get going, I'm not giving you an hour and a half like it was done at the county commissioners. I'm going to give you a little extra time, so make it short and sweet.
I do want you to know that your Public Works Director was already all over me on that, so he is up to speed.
I'm not owning you, I'm just telling you what's going to happen.
Okay, well, then I actually shortened the presentation for the council and I will go through quickly, just press the button, that, come on, there we go. What do we have as a problem? We have basically two problems. One is the downtown problem that starts basically upstream of Booth Street and goes along Riverside Drive. Water comes out of the channel at that point, flows down First Street and then accumulates just immediately adjacent to the Reno Aces Ballpark. The water is not a very wide flood plain, but it causes significant amounts of damage to the properties adjacent. You see that inset, you see that, those two long red lines, those are along the north side, that's the Booth Street Riverside problem, water flowing directly to the east and then it flows back into the river. And water, when it get into a very high storm event, yellow kind of comes out, that's the yellow line that comes out. Over on the right part of that slide, you see water just exits out of the channel because the channel is just incapable of maintaining it. Even though there's a levee on the south end of Sparks, it'll go over that levee and through that, through the openings that are there. And then, of course, water then hits the south part of the Truckee Meadows significantly. Those are the problems we have. The downtown problem, and I wanted to concentrate on that, and it's the reason why I put this slide in there, is so you could see that the problem for First Street and Virginia Street is caused by Riverside and Booth. That's where the causation is and that's where you have to fix the problem. Looking, first slide is, picture is looking north to the Arlington Towers, you're looking across the river during the '97 flood event. In 1955, on the slide to the right, there was enough force in the water to literally pick up vehicles and those were heavy, as everybody knows, very heavy vehicles and it could pick, the water could pick those vehicles up and slide them down three or four blocks before it stopped at this location, which is just adjacent to the Aces Ballpark. Right here is the Aces Ballpark as of, as prior to '97. The water at this point, this is Lake Street Bridge, the water at this point and the water at this point is higher here than it is in the river and it's flowing back into the river at these two locations. So that's what's happening. For the project, we developed a list of criteria that we would apply because, one, we knew that, well, number three, we knew that we had to develop a practical and affordable project. We knew we didn't have enough money to build the $1.4 billion project or $1.6 billion project that was given to the Corps and asked to be built. We needed to adhere to FEMA standards so that we could, so development could occur behind the levees. We needed to maintain a 100-year flood protection. We needed a B/C ratio that it was at least one. Now, this is for rate purposes only, not for comparison to the Corps federal process, but it's so that we could charge our fee and we could give the community the value of that fee. And this fifth one is really, it's a difficult one. Again, I'm going to go through it very quickly and I certainly will come back to it in the form of questions, but the existing flood plain today is a little bit low. We wanted to maintain, though, that existing flood plain so that we didn't put people back into the flood plain because our project now is dealing with a greater quantity of water than the earlier flood plain started with. And we wanted to make sure that where we could, we would put that flood plain level back down. We needed to plan recreational facilities, but only within the footprint of the proposed flood facilities. We needed to minimize neighborhood and environmental disturbances. We have to mitigate for environmental and hydraulic disturbances and we wanted to seek eligibility for federal funding through the Corps process. I think these are things that you have all heard in discussions in the past. I'll go quickly through the local interest plan and I'm going to kind of blaze through it as the mayor, his wise counsel to me was, we will do that. The first project, east of 395, is the new Walmart location. We, that levee and flood wall combination were built down to Glendale by a combination of three sources. We had state, we had Walmart money and then we had flood project money to build that facility. It's already built. The facilities south of Glendale, which is right immediately adjacent to the Glendale Tom Wharf Treatment Plant, as you can see, what we were going to build is a very big wide levee. And the Tom Wharf folks looked at me and they said, did anybody ask us if we wanted that? Well, we recognized that that was going to be difficult, so what we plan to build now are two small on-bank flood walls. The difference between an on-bank flood wall is one that's just right on top of the bank and in-channel flood wall is where you have to go in and build the flood wall vertical all the way to the river, to the invert of the river. So in-channel flood walls are a lot more invasive. We had planned that for the previous, oh, I can't back up, yeah, I can, previous. So this was going to be an in-channel flood wall, this was going to be a levee, neither one of them were what we wanted to do. Moving on to the strip of property immediately north of the airport, we had identified all this as terracing here, this dark green, this was just going to be open flood plain area and we were going to build a levee here. Well, as you can see, there's the remnants of the Pioneer Ditch, actually still in operation. One of the things that we saw is that we didn't need all this extra land, we don't have to buy it and it goes to our benefit cost analysis, so what we decided to do was move the levee adjacent to the terracing. We freed up any impact to the Pioneer Ditch and we made generally a better streamlined design. This is the old LPP plan, Locally Preferred Plan, that was referred to by the Corps as a $1.6 billion plan. We were going to have a levee, come on, I've lost my, there's my mouse. We were going to have a levee right adjacent to Mill Street until it gets to McCarran and then it would stop. McCarran's high enough to prevent overflow. This was all going to remain as open space and recreation. What we are going to do today now is we are going to move that levee up to the, adjacent to the terracing, just like we did adjacent to the airport property, but this property still remains in our possession and still remains for the purposes of recreation that can be transferred to the city of Reno or whomever, because it's part of the Reno Master Plan for Parks. So we will maintain that and keep all the white top taken care of on all this. Now, we're still missing these two pieces of property right here and, but that's the rest of the property we currently control, including the bristle cone and those folks have moved out officially. Moving right along, this is Wolfpack Meats, so you've got McCarran and Clean Water Way. We were going to build a levee around all the feedlot and what we're going to do now is just put in floodproofing and elevation as necessary. Saves us a lot of money. The property adjacent to the U&R property, all this is the U&R property, there was going to be a levee here. What actually was going to happen is Spice Island Drive was going to be made into a levee and you were going to drive on top of that, but we recognized early that that was never going to happen because you have to get semis off of that road down into all these commercial interests and it wasn't going to work. We were basically going to be taking their property. So we've now included a small, about three-foot-high flood wall. It's non-invasive to the area and it doesn't provide shelter for the drug deals and abductions and things that people are always worried about with a big high flood wall there. City of Sparks staff has been part of these decisions. The flood wall continues all the way to here, at which point we can start building a levee again. Levees are cheaper, so we try to build them where we can. Here's the Tom Wharf plant, this is Steamboat Creek. Here's where the North Truckee Drain comes in today. The relocation of the North Truckee Drain is going to continue where we have planned it to be, the City of Sparks. The flood project just gave $4.75 million to the City of Sparks so they can build the first phase of that realignment. Here's the old alignment of North Truckee Drain. What this accomplishes is it allows the water to plug in downstream and you avoid the hydraulic impacts that are associated with the water backing up right there adjacent to Tom Wharf and the Sparks industrial area. This is where all the elevation comes in. At this point, it's level almost all the way back to 395. So again, we were able to get a hydraulic benefit by doing this realignment, plus the fact that we're now encapsulating all of the North Truckee Drain and it protects this part of the Sparks industrial area. Moving on, this was the old plan. The old plan, as you can see, you can't, it's kind of hard to see, but you can see, this is Larkin Circle that I'm following with the mouse. And it comes around, comes off of Vista or Glen, or Greg Street at that point, but we would have had to have shut down all of Larkin Circle, we would have probably had to install cul-de-sacs here and here and here. Maybe would have had to have taken these three properties. It would have been a very expensive proposition to go into Sparks and do that. We felt that it wasn't worth it and I'll tell you about the results of making that decision. Here's where we are now, we have a small flood wall. It is high, it's 15 feet high, maybe even 20, but we don't impact the roadways, we don't disturb the operation of the industrial area at all. We still have to do a little bit of work adjacent to the Tom Wharf plant, but it doesn't take any building, so, and we start a levee at this point. We've been, it's been noted, the property owner doesn't want that levee, that he wants continuation of a flood wall. We will have to make a design-level decision when that happens, but we're not ready to do that at this time. Now, what are the impacts? As I said before, we've got a base flood elevation that is a little higher than the existing base flood elevation. The reason that that's the case is that the old FEMA study done in the early '80s was based upon a hydrology that says that we didn't have, we didn't have that much water for 100-year discharge. Since that, those 1980 studies were done, we've had the '86 storm, which happens to be the second-largest storm on record, and the '97 storm event, which is the first-largest storm on record. And those two have contributed in a statistical format to drive the flow rate that we have to use for analysis up about 2,000 CFS, which in turn puts properties in the flood plain through no fault of their own and no fault of the city, no fault of any developer or any project. But the fact is that we have to deal with it at that level, so we tried to lower it back down. We lowered it back down, but not enough, will probably still impact about 50 homes in the city of Reno. That's a gross estimate. It could be anywhere between 40 to 75. I don't know what it's going to be, but we will plan, as you can see, these areas here, that area in black has now been enlarged a little bit to reflect a few more homes. This area here on the East Side subdivision, which is in Washoe County, has always been totally in the project and we've probably added maybe some of the homes in Rosewood Lake subdivision to that home elevation program that Washoe County has that was inspired by the flood project staff. And so we will make them whole, we will actually pull them out of the flood plain, so they will benefit by the project, they just won't benefit in the way that some of the others will. And we'll talk about that as you want to ask questions, I'll be glad to go into that further. Down at Rainbow Bend, that pink in-channel flood wall, we were going to hog out the holes, we're going to take out all the riparian vegetation, build an in-channel flood wall. It's going to be about $40 million hit to the project. We've been able to ascertain that we can just elevate these structures here that are outlined and maybe not even all of them. We have to go back and do surveying on all of that, but it will be done as part of the final design and not this update study. It's $40 million versus a couple of million dollars, so you can see the great benefit for doing that. Out at Wadsworth, we were planning a levee to protect some of the properties. We're now going to elevate just those, that group of homes that are there and that still maintains the mitigation we need. Now, the Local Rate Plan includes all of those features that I just mentioned, but it also includes the downtown improvements. The downtown improvements are not part of the Corps project. They are not going to be part of something we submit to the federal government and ask for funding. The Local Rate Plan is still fully compliant with the rate design, or with the design criteria that I mentioned earlier. This is what we did as staff, we gave the, our elected officials, our board, this is what a plan that contains, or that basically complies with all the criteria and we want our board to tell us. Well, in conversations with folks at the city of Reno, we recognized early that there was going to be a distaste for one of the proposed elements, but that's fine. The project that we provided is compliant and we'll talk about that. The original plan showed an in-channel flood wall, that's about 20 to 24 feet high along here. These properties would have really loved that flood wall. It would have probably covered up their first floor and it would have made them no vision to the river. The levee would continue almost up to Second Street. Here is Booth Street right here. What our plan decided to do was to actually, this is in consultation with Reno staff, is to basically move and relocate the bridge. And then we only had a small, little on-bank flood wall, again, either a wash, so it costs the same, or it actually costs a little bit less, but we have a lot less heartaches by going that direction. Moving downstream, there was going to be a revised levee and then an in-channel flood wall. Both of these would have been pretty impactful to not only the community, but the park and to the NDEP, the fish folks that don't like in-channel flood wall structures. This design would have not worked as we revised the modeling. What we have concluded in the plan, and I'll talk about this pretty quickly, but we've included in the plan, in our proposed plan, it was a six-foot-high on-bank flood wall. It would have removed about 120 trees. We knew that there were jaws dropping on the floor when we made these statements during our tack, during conversations that we've had with folks. We knew that that wasn't going to fly, but it provided a FEMA-compliant, Zone A-compliant plan. Since then, we have been working with city staff to try to come up with a new alternative. And we looked at a couple of alternatives, so what did we do? We wanted to identify if there was a project that would protect, provide a solution to the downtown. Remember, we have to fix Riverside and Booth Street or else downtown doesn't get fixed. Replacing the bridges doesn't do the job, you still have to fix Riverside. We needed to provide 100-year flood protection, but it's okay if it wasn't FEMA-compliant. So FEMA, off the top, requires an extra three feet of freeboard on every structure, so your levees, your flood walls have to be three feet higher than ordinarily to protect for the 100-year. This council approved a bridge designed for the Virginia Street Bridge with only two feet of freeboard over the 100-year typically required, the Corps requires four. So that bridge won't be FEMA-compliant, but it's okay. It's not a problem, it still will provide additional flood protection to downtown. We wanted something that would have probable acceptance by the neighborhood. We needed to establish the project benefits because at the end of the day, remember, I needed a B/C ratio that was better than one, at least one, so that I could charge a rate associated with the project. associated with the project. And then I needed to establish a funding contribution that could be given from TERFMA for a larger-scale project, which would mean that we would then go into partnership with RTC, with City of Reno, on other ideas for that area along Riverside Drive. So what are the key elements of the Reno alternative that is included in this plan? It's a standalone plan. It will work whether any other agency does anything or not. The City of Reno, RTC, they're currently studying the Keystone Corridor, so we are working directly with them to make sure that the work that they do is fully, that they're fully aware of what we're intending to do and what we need done, and we will continue working with them to get to that point. But we don't have time to wait for the conclusion of that study. So we're developing a standalone plan that will work, that we can charge, and we can get our rates out on, that define the benefits that we need. So we also need to, the three things, we're going ahead and remove the Booth Street Bridge. We're going to replace the Booth Street Bridge with a pedestrian bicycle facility rather than a vehicular facility, route the traffic up on Keystone, and then deal with the traffic consequences through study that we're doing ourselves. And as long as we see that it's a feasible alternative, we can then develop the cost for that and then move forward with the rates. We would convert Riverside Drive into a one-way street. There are other ideas out there, and I will go through the impacts, but there are other ideas out there that would even remove completely Riverside Drive and convert the whole thing to a linear park, which we are totally in favor of. We think that's a great idea. But we would only have a contribution that would be associated with our standalone alternative, which we will include in the costs provided to the board. We're not done with that yet. Still need another couple of weeks. So the impacts of the proposed solution, you lose the FEMA support after a disaster. There are certain pockets of money that are only available to Zone A residents. So if you don't have, you're not in a Zone A, you lose some of those pockets of money. You don't lose them all. You still get, there are still other funds that can be given, but you do lose a portion of that. It's one of the disadvantages of not being FEMA-compliant. It does interrupt the established traffic patterns in the neighborhood. That's one of the negative impacts. One of the positive impacts, it saves nearly all the trees. Those that we have to take down because of localized problems, we can replace. It also provides for a future linear park, which I think is a wonderful idea, and we will certainly be following that idea as it starts to take wings. Come on. These are the alternatives that we looked at. Alternative A, we'll call it, in-channel flood wall. You see how it's invasive? It goes in, rips up all the embankment, because this is the foundation, has to take all the trees above it. That's about 50 to 75 trees adjacent to the river. The alternative that we selected was this one. It removes more trees, but it's not as invasive into the river. But it removes about 120 trees. This is the alternative that we included in the plan, and this wall is about six feet high. It's not quite shown correctly there. It would be up about to here, because it would be above the person you see standing, so that it would basically cause visual impacts as well. Again, Riverside Drive would be left alone. A third alternative that we considered from the standpoint of feasibility was just sticking a flood wall here. Now, this doesn't seem to be too popular in and amongst the City of Reno staff, so what was considered as part of the new Reno alternative, as we talked about, or as I mentioned to the board, is this alternative. We still take half of Riverside Drive. We build a levy-type structure so that it's not just a wall. We have maybe an 18-inch little flood wall here. We're doing this in combinations, because what we can do is build this into a planter and really make it a beautiful facility. This works, and it still maintains the beauty. I don't have what an approximate slide would look like. I hope to have that by the time I put it in front of the board. And moving down Arlington, this is the old plan. The new plan is our flood wall would stay all the way, would current to here, to the little park right here. We would elevate this pedestrian bridge and elevate this pedestrian bridge. Sierra Street Bridge is still being replaced, so all the bridges downtown will be taken care of. Virginia Street, as you know, is being replaced. And then we also would replace Center and Lake. Your Public Works Director has asked that we include a little bit higher, the same standard for the Virginia Street Bridge as we do for Lake. Unfortunately, that means that we have to raise the Lake Bridge seven feet. That's going to be a big chunk, and it's going to have a large impact north and south of the river. So we will be, this drawing was meant for a six-foot raise, not a seven-foot raise. The flood walls that you have currently downtown were eliminated from this plan because there's no longer a need to do them. The water now stays in the channel due to the fact that we've controlled Riverside, we've controlled the bridges, and we don't need to do the previous one, this one here between Virginia and Center. We don't need to do any of the in-channel flood walls along the Sienna or anything adjacent to the ballpark or to Lake Street, I'm sorry. So that saved us some money. But in conversations with your Public Works Director, I want to put on record that what we will do is these structures, these structures are probably severely unstable. And therefore, what we will do after we get our plan approved and we're moving forward, we will go back and then we will do a complete assessment of the stability of each one of those structures, and then we will adjust our rates to include those facilities as needed. But at this point in time, it's a guess as whether or not they needed to be done. We didn't have time to, with the very egregious, or the very tough schedule that we had to get a plan in front of the board, there was no time to do that kind. Plus, we didn't have the money to do it either. We ended up giving it to Reno and Sparks, which I think is a better and a wiser use of that money. But again, the notion is that we will do that. I'm going to be putting a letter together to the Public Works Director that says that, so that you will have that commitment from me. We don't need to do the levy, the Evans Coonsley levy. We don't need to do anything. This is the, you see that green scribbling up the top? That's the kind of the footprint of the Reno Aces Ballpark. They took care of their embankment, so we don't have to do that. And all this erosion control, remember, erosion control gets us into the channel and it causes instability on certain things. Yes, we fix it, but we go in during the interim time. This will eliminate to almost that. So we don't have to go in and do a lot of the in-channel work that we originally thought we were going to have to do. And then that little piece there, you see the erosion protection deal? There's wells. We will remove the existing Wells Bridge, and we'll replace it with pedestrian bridge that can be used by residents and recreational users. And with that report card, we said we'd get this all done by September. We ended up putting it in front of the board in October. We got some, thank you. Here comes the hook. Okay, we had this worked out. I want you to know this.
I know you do.
So this is all part of the plan. So our schedule, here's our schedule. We need, we want to have, we want the board to approve the plan in December, so that we can move out on determining our rates. That's about a six-month process. We have a two-month to three-month vetting period where we'll talk about the rates. During the interim time, we will be discussing this plan to the community, and we will be doing the best we can to have a completely educated public on this. And then we have the first and second hearing. It's probably judicial review about two years. So that puts us about three years before we can actually use any of that revenue collected. And with that, I am done.
Fantastic job. Anybody have any questions or anything right now?
I'll just say that since the proposal in the West Arlington area has been, you know, revealed to the public, I've been hearing a lot, following it closely, and just be watchful of it, because it's big consequences to a very mature area that's loved and used by a lot. So thank you.
Any other comments, questions, or anything? Thank you very much. Appreciate it. All right. Now we're J1, we did. Now we're item J2, Parks and Recreation, J2. We have two people that wish to speak. I'm going to let them speak. Mr. Jerry Frederick.
I'm not going to sit here and debate with you the pros and cons of outsourcing, because for every report on outsourcing, you'll find one that conflicts each other, depending on who commissioned the report. I just want to talk about the facts. The facts of the matter are that we've tried outsourcing here in Reno before. One of them was the parking meters. The Reno Gazette Journal headline said, "What Could We Have Done With That $615,000?" Now it sounds like it's even gotten more convoluted from what Mr. Lawton has brought forward. The next one is ADP. Sometime this month, you're going to have to come up with another $170,000 for ADP. Those are facts. This is a five-year agreement that is approximately $165,000 per year. The mowing season is six months long. It's not 2,080 hours. It's 1,040 hours. It's in the RFP, it's a six-month agreement, for six months of mowing. If you take three people, which are the three mowers that you're talking about, you are going to be paying approximately $165,000 divided by 3,120 man-hours equals $52.88 per hour. That's what you'll be paying for mowing. A top-out city maintenance worker makes less than 28, and if you want to throw in their benefits and post-employment benefits, they would have to equal 89.6% to get the same number of 52.88. I don't see where the savings is. And lastly, the current agreement between Local 39 and the City of Reno, Article 19 talks about limited appointments. It specifically addresses seasonal workers in the parks, and it was negotiated in good faith with the city, is currently in effect. I don't see how the city can just arbitrarily say, "We don't want to do it anymore." Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Lebo Newman?
Lebo Newman, Signature Landscapes, 3705 Berneway. I own and am one of the partners in Signature Landscapes. We are the company that the City Park staff has given you a report to award the contract to. We have done contracts with the city before doing mowing before. I'm not here to discuss the union employee situation either. I just wanted to point out that the city staff has run their own numbers comparison. It's not just staff expense, obviously. It's also equipment expense, and we're certainly not ADP. We're parking meters. It's a totally different thing. We're just here to answer questions. As I said before, we've done numerous other contracts with the city and done them successfully, and according to the city staff, have saved the city money.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you. Bring it back to the table for discussion or anything? Any question from staff? Sir? What was your motion? Moved or approved? Do I have a second? Have a second? All in favor, excuse me, you got a second? All in favor, say aye.
Discussion, please.
Discussion?
I can ask for discussion.
We just voted.
You know, it's appropriate.
Sorry you weren't here, but I'll let you discuss.
Yeah, I mean, calling for discussion is calling for discussion.
Yeah, but when I call for the vote, you usually get the discussion before. If you'd have been here, we would have taken it.
The discussion, I thought, came after the second motion. Am I correct?
Not a second motion.
I mean, after the motion and the second.
The motion and second.
Call for discussion.
And then when you came running in, you wanted discussion. I'm going to let you go ahead and discuss. Own it.
I thought when this came up before previously, we asked to see the big picture of how the Parks Department's doing in all of its scope of operations, recreational and facilities, in that this would be coming back in kind of a broader discussion. And I'm just seeing the agenda, you know, the item just coming back again. What was your understanding of our previous direction?
Jeff Mann, Parks Recreation, Community Services. Our understanding was to bring this item back for outsourcing or contracting out the mowing operation. At the discussion, at the September meeting, we also briefed that park maintenance would be coming back the following month to talk about overall park maintenance operations, but that wouldn't include recreation operations.
Okay, so have you done that with your operations? You came back with all that, correct?
Yes, that was done back in October.
Okay, and what was the direction from that? Was to bring us some options, right?
Yes, we provided a list of opportunities and possibilities for parks to pursue, to reduce or improve our maintenance costs at little or no service, or no additional costs. Council didn't take any action on the item, just provided a lot of comments, which we are pursuing.
I'm pursuing, okay. I guess my understanding was that we were going to continue that conversation before we brought in this. So I'm having a hard time with this. And then in addition, I see the report, which is not a glowing one, from the Youth Soccer Association, their annual report on, you know, essentially the state of the fields. It's not good out there from that report, correct? I mean, I see that there's more than mowing issues going on. There's even turf quality, real big turf quality issues.
I'm not familiar with the report you're speaking of, but I would agree that we have overall park maintenance issues, and that was the topic of discussion at last month's meeting.
Okay. Well, I'm not going to support this, because I thought the direction was that we were going to look at the broader operations, can you do that discussion before we go and think about how these resources are deployed? So I'm not prepared to support this at this time.
Okay. I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no.
No.
Show the vote for one. Item J3. Mr., you wanted to talk, you want to postpone this? That's one on the advertising. You and staff, we're going to get together with some people?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. What I would suggest on behalf of the city manager is that the council allow us to take this back to have a meeting between OCCE from the City of Reno and the media people from Waste Management to see if we can find a way to cover some of the areas, maybe perhaps that weren't covered in the original public awareness campaign, and do it within the budget of what Waste Management has provided. So I'd ask that you not take action on this and allow us to come back with a report, hopefully within the next month, on how we can.
So give me a date.
How about January 15?
The first meeting in January?
Yes.
Okay.
When does the new program roll out? The new Waste, when does the new program roll out?
Jason Geddes, Environmental Services Administrator. Citizens will be receiving their bins starting January 1, and collection will start at the first collection date in February.
Okay. So yeah, I was going to say.
We need a December meeting.
How are we going to do effective proactive communication?
Particularly, we're looking for, the plan would cost $6,000. Really? Waste Management is not willing to step up to the plate and spend $6,000 to communicate with the citizens about the change. We heard in our town hall meetings that people weren't even aware of anything that had happened, although there were lots of public meetings. I know I heard at my town hall meeting, they rely on radio and TV, and they expect to hear from radio and TV about changes and actions. They were very surprised by $6,000 to effectively communicate with something. They were very surprised by $6,000 to effectively communicate, is something they're not willing to discuss and provide.
If, if I can, just to get to that point, that's what we're going to have the conversation about, is perhaps the strategy that's in place right now doesn't cover all the bases in terms of the different components of our community and how they get information. So we wanted to go back and sit with Waste Management and say, "Okay, perhaps your strategy isn't hitting everybody," based on what we've heard at these town hall meetings, and they've consented to talk to us about maybe changing their approach. So the idea would be, you know, setting aside the $6,000 additional, is there a way to cover what our concern is with their current program? And I think we could certainly be back to you by December 11th for a report on what the situation is. It's just very tight because these meetings are coming quick. We can be back by the 11th.
But citizens have to make their decision on which of the options they choose, which receptacle sizes they want, by the first part of December, correct?
Or a default.
Yeah, I, I think there's a default decision, but my understanding, and Jason can step in on this, is there still is ways to change it. I mean, it's not locked in permanently. In other words, if they don't make a decision, decision's made for them, but they can certainly say, "Well, why didn't, you know," if they don't choose to make that decision before it happens, there's a way to make the decision after.
And they would, I'm guessing they would say, "But look, there were all of these public meetings. There have been at least three, probably four notices in the bills and a TMA bill, but about 30% of the people have responded so far. There hasn't been much success in what TMA, or in what Waste Management has done yet. If only 30% of the people have responded and were two weeks out from their deadline for being, to being able to respond, there hasn't been success."
Well, that's why we're going to meet with them to talk about it.
When's our first meeting in December?
It would be the fourth.
Fourth. You should be able to meet with them between now and then and report back to us on the fourth.
Okay, that'd be fine.
Yeah, the modes of communication, I, I don't think have been effective, and that's just from constituent contact and my own observations. Sticking the flyer in your bill is not an effective means of communication. It ends up in the round file. They need, they have got to do a better job with communications on this issue.
So let's make a deal and come back, bring this item back on the 4th of December.
We'll do that.
Mr. Mann?
May I make an inquiry?
You have, under the contract, the city manager as his designee, have his authority to do minor modifications or notices of agreements, correct?
That is correct.
Yeah, and there's been two so far, right?
That is correct.
Yeah. I guess, you know, we're seeing need here, that we're not seeing them stepping up, and so I would say that, you know, in this relationship and this administrative going back and forth, that if there's something we're seeing, we're not getting, and they come to you wanting something, you know, we need to work with this counterparty on making sure it works for all, and since we've already responded to two requests for them administratively, I think maybe next time they ask, we need to see where we are in the overall scope of the relationship. I would, I would offer that. Because this is a long-term relationship we have with them.
Yes, it is. Yes, you have something?
I do, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for the opportunity. Assistant City Manager, Kayden Smatievich, for the record, just want to sort of set some expectations for meeting that December 4th deadline. We do have the holidays coming forth. I know there's been some frustration from council of getting staff reports late, but with those holiday deadlines and others, I just wanted to, to make everyone aware that it is likely that that staff report will have to come to you after your full packet for the 4th. So just wanted to make you aware that's coming and ask for you to reserve a little time to review it right before the meeting.
That's a reasonable request.
Thank you.
Yes. All right. Chair had taken a motion to accept staff's recommendation to, to December the 4th. Come back, have a motion. Second, all in favor, say aye. Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Update and discussion on snow and ice control plan?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, John Flansmore Public Works, like to introduce Marnell Hines. Marnell Hines began workforce in August and is our Maintenance and Operations Manager in Streets. I'll turn the time over to him for the presentation.
For the record, Marnell Hines, Street Maintenance and Operations Manager, Public Works. What we have before you is a brief over face of the city of Reno's snow and ice control The purpose of this plan is to establish procedures and direction for the city of Reno Public Works staff to efficiently conduct snow removal operations and for information source for the citizens of the community. This is a picture of tandem plowing that's more effective on the larger or the wider The responsibilities of Public Works, we have 220, 2,244 lane miles roadway, we have 19 snow and ice routes, and the priorities are the arterial and the collector route. We currently have over 65 qualified snow plow operators utilizing staff from street maintenance and sewer maintenance. We currently have 17 trucks mounted with plows and sanders, and we have one-wheel loader mounted with a push plow that we put up in the higher elevations. This is one of the replacement vehicles that we have. We should have these on in, in our possession by the end of the year, and these replacing some of the older vehicles that have a higher rate of maintenance probability. The storm events, storm events that exceed over four inches or more, street supervisors and crew work alternating 12-hour shifts, 24/7, until all priority roadways have been plowed. A major snowstorm event which exceeds eight inches or more and lasting more than five days with heavy accumulation, contractors are available to assist in emergency snow Snow plow operators are instructed to plow the accumulation of snow once it reaches the depth of four inches or more. Streets will be plowed in the priority order of priority one is arterials, priority two are collectors, school zones, hills, curves, dangerous intersections, bus routes, hospitals, and emergency facilities. Sanding is applied on the roadway as needed. We're currently utilizing salt brine as a anti-icing and a de-icing treatment. The crews will be pre-treating the priority streets with salt brine, which can be applied up to two days prior to a storm when we have a high probability of accumulation. Before snow or ice event, again, city crews will apply priority one streets, bridges, inclines with salt brine, which is a clear water solution. It's composed of tap water, road salt, and it reduces the freezing level to minus six. This is a snapshot of the brine processing. The tanks are holding the brine that has been pumped into the trucks that dispersed on the roadways. A total application rate of 50 gallons per lane mile at the cost of six to eight cents per gallon, or approximately $3 to $4 per lane mile. Public information, snow plan, public service announcements, update city websites during storm events exceeding 12 inches. Provide information to the public information officer to release media during storm events exceeding 12 inches. Reno Direct will be updated on the daily activities and will inform street personnel of public safety concerns. Storm cleanup operations, per Washoe County air quality health mandates, all sanding material must be retrieved from the roadway at the end of each storm event within 96 hours or four days, weather permitting. Cleanup operations utilize nine sweepers, two shifts, working 12 hours, 24/7 hours a day until all the material is retrieved. That concludes the presentation. Any questions?
Are there any questions?
I guess, this is a lot about the streets, but I'm very concerned about the pedestrian infrastructure, particularly, just reading, you know, older folks, if they take a fall, 65 and older, break a hip, the mortality rate is about 25%, upward of 25%. So making sure that sidewalks are clear of ice is really important. And I heard last year from a constituent about ice concerns, and I reviewed the ice and pedestrian, the ice and snow plan, and I'm just wondering what sort of consideration, whether in our notifications or in our efforts, goes out to making sure that we have safe walking areas for our citizen?
Well, there is a notice, there is an ordinance for property owners to clear all snow from their adjacent walkways. The issue would probably be the enforcement side of it, and then also is, in certain areas, like all the downtown area, we remove all of the snow from the walkways. So it's, it's a difficult situation to enforce for the majority of the city.
Do you do any kind of alerts and let people know that that is their obligation?
When we do media information alerts, we emphasize that, that property owners must remove the snow from their walkways and try to give that information out.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Motion to accept the report? I have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
For the record, Jill Olson, Finance. Council has in their packet some proposed revisions to the existing fund policies. The intent for the revisions was to just update all of the policies to make sure we had current terminology, that it reflected the current staff and the reorganization that's occurred within the city of Reno. We did have some other comments and changes, mostly administrative, and some were just corrections to make sure that we had the correct NRS statues, statutes referenced. For clarification, we did send a memo to council on Monday to reflect what some of the Fab member comments and questions were, and that memo went out Monday afternoon. Hopefully all of you received that, so you could see those. One more item of clarification, the Building Enterprise Fund Committee met, and they just wanted on the record clarification of one point under financial specificity related to retained earnings. The language in NRS says that the retained earnings are not to exceed 50% of annual operating costs, including capital, and they wanted, they noticed that NRS says "and" capital. Staff believes that the word "including" is equivalent to using the word "and," and they just wanted that reflected on the record, that that was the intent. And with that, we'll answer any questions related to the policies.
Ms. Brackus?
You know, it's hard to follow. I wonder if we could number the policies or, you know, so we can refer to them somehow? Because I'm, I'm not sure which one you're talking about.
Oh, the Building Enterprise Fund for that last comment?
Yeah.
That'd be back under enterprise funds.
Yeah, I just didn't see that, but, but I'll just, I have a number of questions about some of these other ones. In terms of the, in, in terms of the general fund policy, financial specificity, sub C, the goal, this is new language, as I see it, in blue, the goal is to have an additional unreserved fund balance in order to improve fiscal integrity. The unreserved balance goal is to achieve an additional 4.3-year expenditures of the general fund. Can you explain what is our new financial, you know, through this fund policy? This, this sounds like policy setting, and I just want to know what it is.
I, I'll defer to Kate Thomas, the Budget Director, on that, but this was introduced during the budget process, and so this language was added because of that discussion, but she may want to further clarify on that.
Thank you for the record, Kate Thomas. Currently, law allows us to have up to an 8.3% fund balance. We've been holding a 4%, so the goal would be to get up to that maximum amount, so this allows us, the language allows us to get up to that point so that we can plan in the future for those reserve levels to be adequate.
Well, okay. Well, if we get up to that 8.3 this next budget cycle and we're there, are we going to strip this out then? I mean, it seems like it's a very interim goal.
No, I think what we would anticipate doing is having that in there, because until statute changes, that number is sort of a stagnant number that we can't go past for a couple of reasons. But essentially, what we'd like to do is just have that in there so that we actually have that goal to get up to that 8.3%, which is the additional 4.3 over the four that we've got. So we've got that goal, and I mean, maybe we add something that says to achieve and maintain.
Maintain, yeah.
Mm-hmm. We need to.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just wondering, because, you know, the policies, you want to be stat, more or less static, but, okay, that, that explains that. On the next one, the Community Development Grant Funds Policy, I have confusion between that one and a couple others. There's also, in the back, and in the back, there's another one called the, the grant, in the way back, there's a Community Development Grant Funds Fund Policy. Is that the same document, just unmarked up?
They are not the same, again, for the record, Jill Olson. They're not the same, but you will see some overlap between the fund policies. You're going to see that even between the SAD and the debt funds. There, there is some overlap on those, but we wanted, since they are separate funds, some of the, there are consistent items within each of those fund policies. So you are going to see some overlap, but they are distinct and separate because they are separate funds.
Yeah, it's just because I, I see then that we have a regular city grant policy, a straight city grant policy, and when you have competing policies, it seems hard to read in concert, and I can't quite find the, the grant one in general, but it, it was just one that applied to all grants. So how would you, would you read the more narrow and specific one, or how would you?
It would depend on which grant.
What the issue is?
Yeah.
Okay, I mean, I guess on this one, on the, on the Community Development Grant Fund Policy, you're talking about responsibilities and the guidelines to base the budget recommendations on, and you completely omitted that loan program. We just, for the first time, committed CDBG funds to a loan program, I think it was a revolving loan program, and it's silent on that. So I don't know, you know, what, what's going on here with that one, because you talk about how we're going to use it. Do you have any comments on that?
We did receive input from the Budget Office and also from Community Development. In fact, Jody Goodwin, Royal Goodwin, went through this before she left. My understanding is that they wanted it removed so that it would not draw a box that would actually cause any limitations. We can still do that and allow for those loan programs, but we didn't want to limit ourselves in any way. The current language should allow, it does allow for the loan program to continue, it just doesn't have its own specific call-out within the fund policy.
Would you call it part of the public service project, or, because it says the remaining grant revenues will be used for physical improvement projects? And that was CDBG?
Yeah, it would be just public service projects.
Okay. I'm not sure about that one, but, okay, and then also, the process for CDBG, have you ever checked, I know a lot of cities, and Tom Bedica, who, for whom the portion of the CAC is named after, who was a HUD representative here, was always so surprised that the city of Reno did not have a Citizens Advisory Committee for the use of Community Development Block Grants. He told me this years ago. Are you, why don't we have an Advisory Citizens Committee? It seems like it's a very internal process with the staff, and then it goes to the council. A lot of cities have that intermediate.
Robert Chisel, Director of Finance, for the record. You know, these are fund policies that are in relation to the policy of the fund and the financial aspects of them, so, you know, we didn't get into whether there's going to be other boards or commissions and associated with each of these areas, so that would have been a separate item.
But you're outlining a process, and I'm just wondering what the thinking is of that process, what, you know, I mean, because, were you looking at this substantively?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of the council, Fred Turner, Community Development Director, and specifically, we wanted to keep the fund policies general, more the operational side of the house of the Community Development Block Grant Program. Typically, when we go through our process for the work plan, that is a public process that we bring into the council, and we have council approval, and there's a public input process to that. So again, that, that's more of the operational aspect of it. For this fund policy, we wanted to keep it general.
Okay, well, I'll save that for another time, because I, I mean, I'll look next time we're getting monitored by HUD on that. But, okay, on the forfeiture Account Special Revenue Fund Policy, I bring, I understand that- that brings in about a half million dollars, and I think I brought it up during budget, and I asked about this policy. And it doesn't seem like the council really has a lot of oversight of this money, or is shown kind of a line item of it, and it's for use by the City Attorney of the Police Department. What's the process? How does the City Council know? Because I look at the council's disbursements every week, month, and I see money coming out of there, but it's such a large policy that seems like there's really not a lot of oversight that we're provided for that.
You do receive the information on the disbursement request, as you stated. Generally, the dollar amount of each of those purchases is low enough that it doesn't meet the threshold for each item to come before council. If you wanted some special reporting on a quarterly basis, or however often you wanted that, I'm sure those departments could provide that to you, just so you could see a line item list of what those dollars were spent on. But it doesn't, each of the disbursements don't trigger the threshold for it to come to council, but certainly summary reports, summary reports can be provided to you.
Well, I guess, you know, I would see it more during the budget process. We see we have a half million dollars that can be used. I'm sure, I know there's NRS requirements for it, but I wouldn't remember asking and saying, oh, well, the fund policy doesn't specify that, you know, we detail out to you. Well, here, we've got the fund policy before us to look at, and I'd like to see a mechanism so that we can know, when we set the budget, how this half million dollars will be used and deployed. That's where I would like to see it go. Is that contemplated at all in here?
It is. If you look, even in the budget section, it says it shall be included in the budget. If you want a more specific presentation on that aspect of the budget, that can certainly be provided. It doesn't have to be contained in the fund policy as far as we shall provide a report. It does state in the fund policy that the budget will be prepared and submitted through, it's part of the entire budget that is submitted through the City Council, but not every single line item is called out during those budget presentations, and I don't know if Kate has anything to add to that, but certainly, if there are things that you're interested in, those items can be pulled out and highlighted during the budget process.
Well, perhaps I could see how the forfeiture account or pool of money was identified, so a typical citizen, even myself, could see right now how that half million dollars is spent and be utilized. You know, if it's just supplies or personnel, you know, I'd like to know, because also that, you know, how you say it never hits within the trigger that comes to us, I think there's a gap there, is what I'm saying. And so, you know, we can look through the budget and see how the forfeiture is now allocated. Maybe we can make thoughts about changing that for next term.
Mr. Mayor, Tracy Chase, Reno City Attorney's Office. As part of that request, legal can provide some background on this NRS statutes that apply to forfeitures, because they are very restricted, and you cannot use them to supplant general operating funds. So we can provide you that information, absolutely.
Yeah, I mean, that would be part of our oversight.
Let's tighten these questions up.
Okay, well, I see these as very substantial, I really do, Mayor, and I'll move on to the next one related to the redevelopment agency funds. But how many could have been asked and answered outside of a roomful of our personnel? Well, you know, when I got this on Friday and did not know or see it was coming before, had not, you know, I think these are substantial enough that they could have been out for a month, comment period, to the public in general, to be honest. If we had caucus, maybe they would have been answered, but, you know, these are very comprehensive. And I will, I will add that there's some actions here that, this gets to heart of charter issues, where the City Council maintains and requires their financial oversight, and where some is maybe being delegated more to the City Manager. And so I'm looking at it very much from that perspective. On the redevelopment ones, I wonder about the role of the agency, the agency board, the relationship to the plan. There's a lot here.
Well, a lot of this stuff could have been answered if you had gone to the Department or the staff people and asked them ahead of time, because some of it's starting to ramble, as far as I'm concerned.
Okay, well, I'll stop my comments of continued oversight and how we look at our fund policies, the policies of us related to our financial responsibilities and review these. You're making a generalization that is not accurate of this body, of all of us. And if you choose to ask all your questions at this dais at every council meeting and have a roomful of our personnel, we could calculate the hours and expense related there, too, that we could have asked outside of today. Well, I guess then I will. And many of us have asked outside of today. I will say that then this raises operational questions about something this substantial coming to the council without a little more, maybe workshop setting, or something else, so.
And that's certainly your prerogative, as far as you're concerned, but I don't think the rest of the council feels that way.
Okay, well, that's fine. And I will, then I will make the motion. Thank you.
Okay, do I have a second? All in favor, say aye. Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Now we go to item K one.
Resolution number 7919, Resolution of the City Council of the City of Reno, amending City Council Resolution Number 5242, modifying the process for appointments to the Reno City Planning Commission and authorizing and directing the City Manager or his or her designee to do any and all things and to carry out, give effect to, and comply with the terms and intent of this resolution, including without limitation, preparing and processing any necessary amendments to Reno Municipal Code in Title 18.
Have a motion, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Boards and Commission appointments, Downtown Maintenance District.
Mr. Mayor, I am the liaison, and under our protocols, I make the recommendations. We have four applications for five vacancies, and I recommend that all four be appointed.
Have a second?
Second.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Parks and Rec Commission.
Mr. Mayor, I am the liaison to the Parks and Rec Commission, and under our practice, I'm the one then to make a motion for filling of these vacancies, and I motion and recommend that we appoint Troy Harsh and Eric Scalise to the two vacancies that currently exist.
Second.
Have a motion, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Mr. Lorton, you wish to say something on item K two?
For the record, Eddie Lorton, Mr. Mayor, City Council. And then I was hoping to, on K two C, we stuck to what Ms. Brackus said about sticking to the charter, that the City Manager makes this appointment. Thank you.
Well, the City Manager asked me to go ahead and make the appointment, so I'm going to recommend Kathleen Taylor.
Second.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Mayor and Council, identification of Mayor and Council items, future agenda items. Ms. Zedra.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Council probably saw that we got reference from the City Attorney's Office, some discussion that I've been having for a couple of months with them, about statutes and cases in other locales, as well as NRS relating to brothel advertising, and that it is actually, we have grounds by NRS to prohibit brothel advertising in Washoe County. So want council's agreement that we have the Attorney's Office continue to pursue and bring us actions that we can take to prohibit brothel advertising within Washoe County, at least within the City of Reno.
Tracy Chase, Reno City Attorney's Office, that's already established in state law and county law. I don't know if there's any other action that our office could recommend to you, because the state has legislated in that area, so the law is established.
Then what we need is action plans, how we will enforce statute.
Okay, so we could coordinate with the Reno Police Department, if that's what you're asking. We'll be happy to do that, yeah.
Okay, great.
Okay. Any other items, future agenda?
Mr. Mayor, on August 14th, this council gave direction to staff to begin a licensing process of taxi cab drivers and to return back to us. I'd like to have that on our next agenda. I don't, I think the timeline's passed, and they haven't begun licensing.
But I think, but I think it's coming up soon. I think it's, I mean, I saw the email where.
Yeah, there's an exchange.
Yeah, I mean, it's scheduled to be coming.
That is correct. It is Fred Turner, Community Development Director. It is scheduled, I believe, December 11th, or, I'm sorry, in January, to come back to the City Council. I would have to check that email quickly.
Yeah, the email spelled it out, and basically, it was a workload issue. I mean, I keep, said what the issue was.
Mr. Chomp, our business license manager, did send out an email to Mrs. Penrod regarding that.
Well, I haven't seen that, and I guess my question is, that was, has the licensing begun?
We will be bringing an update to the City Council in January regarding that, where we are in that process.
Hasn't begun.
I would have to find out specifically from Michael, what level is complete.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm trying to find it. It is dead.
Any other agenda items? We'll move on now to liaison reports. Ms. Brackus?
I have none.
Ms. Zedra?
No.
Mr. Dorch? Ms. Jordan?
Nothing, sir.
Okay, reports from any conference and professional meetings. I'm going to give a short report. I went to Los Angeles and participated in the city design, urban design program sponsored by the National Arts Council, and it was a very good seminar. We will be getting reports back from them of the different critiques of what they gave every city, and we should be getting that within the next couple of weeks. Any others? Yes?
Mr. Mayor, if I can, just add on that, we will plan on bringing back a presentation on both what you presented to that group, as well as the recommendation to show at the council.
All right.
And, Mr. Mayor, the City Manager and Assistant City Manager, Thomas, and Mr. Delgado and I attended the American, Future American City, the new, the new American City, that had similar discussion points relating to economic development, all based on economic development in the cities of the future, and how they will better be suited to improve their economic viability. And much of it was based on, it was held at Drexel University right on campus. They have, in Philadelphia, multiple examples of working with their universities for economic development, which of course is something that we're attempting to take on and have certainly begun, and have had some success here. And we came back with multiple ideas that I think can spin off of some of the reports and recommendations that you received in LA as well.
The National Endowment of the Arts sponsored the one I went to, UCLA, and it was really an outstanding deal. They had a lot of designers from all over the United States for West Coast-type cities, and so it'd be interesting to see the reports come in. All right, election of a vice mayor.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to elect Councilmember Dorch as our vice mayor.
Second.
Nominate, excuse me.
Second. Have a motion, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Congratulations, Mr. Dorch. Item L five. Need a little help for these guys?
Second.
Everybody going to give me a little money for it?
I think I'm out.
Oh, no, this is a different thing. Okay, no, okay.
A motion, second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Item L six, Ms. Jordan.
Resolution number 7920, Resolution donating council donation funds to the Blues Lovers United Enrichment Society of Reno for promotion of the City of Reno at the 2014 International Blues Challenge in Memphis, Tennessee, in the amount of $1,000 from Mayor Koschel and in the amount of $250 from Councilmember Jordan, for the total amount of $1,250.
All in favor, say aye. Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Item L seven.
Resolution number 7921, Resolution donating council donation funds to the Holland Project to support their all-ages music and art venue for youth and youth and young adults in the amount of $500.
Second.
Have a motion, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Item L eight.
This is just a clarification and direction to staff to modify a prior direction to staff about creating an ad hoc task force to examine homelessness issues, and rather request the City Manager to use his authority to establish a committee on homeless issues, which reports to the City Manager. That's a motion.
Okay, second. Second. All in favor.
Can we call for, I just have a question on that, and I will, I will call attention to Rule 15I that says, after the motion second, there's a discussion for council members, so I understand that I'm questioning at the right time here. Is that going to be an internal committee, where the public can participate? Is that the thinking? And be invited to participate?
That's what I had the standard.
Okay, because I have in my inbox someone who had, you know, said, hey, great, I want to participate, and I just want to let that person know. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, Tracy Chase, just for the record, if the City Manager is establishing this committee, it will be under his purview, and this council would not have authority as to how he establishes it. I wanted to make that clear.
Great.
Thank you.
Have a motion, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. I do understand the discussion part is out for a motion. When people aren't here, though, and they come rushing in and want to make a, to go into discussion at the last minute because they weren't here during the motion, I understand your criticism. Thank you. Discussion possible identification funding source to help purchase LED lights for the Reno Arch in red. Once we buy these, we will now own red, white, and blue LED lights for different things that we need to do, but this is for women's breast cancer, and I hope that all of you will kick in a thousand dollars out of your fund or something, because it's about $7,000.
I would love to support and kick in some funds. I'm not sure that I have any of my council funds left.
Okay.
I know we recently got that report, but we don't have it available, do we, here? Just on where our, how much funds we have available? We don't, we don't have it here, do we? Oh, we can get it. We'll just, I'll, I'll put in, I don't know how much, once I look and see, I'll let you know.
And I'll put, and I'll put more in, whatever. Okay?
Will do. Mr. Mayor, I have a question about that, and it was an article I read with regards to the Welcome to Las Vegas sign, and how they are powering that, moving into powering that by solar. Is that something that we've ever looked into with the arch?
I don't know that we have.
Okay.
We can look at it.
I'm just curious to see if there's some cost savings associated with it, and if we might want to look at solar powering of our arch.
You know, one thing, and I'm not going to bring it up now, but one thing I'd like to see, I noticed in Carson City, they've got a big monument sign as you come into town that says Welcome to Carson City. I think we should look at doing some of those signs around our community, welcoming people, but that'll be something we can discuss in the future. Okay, so, let's have a motion on the, no, I want a motion on the.
Identify the.
Huh?
Identify the.
Okay, all right, okay, we'll put it on the next agenda. We'll put it on the next. We have to have time to order the bulbs.
All right, we'll try December 4th.
Thank you very much. I thought we could work that out.
It may be a verbal report.
Okay, all right. Any public comment? Mark Merkel.
What I did too, but he came in late, but I'm going to let him.
If it's a, you missed the audience, we had a full room for you to talk to.
I had you cooperate, hey, I had these people in the camera.
Yeah, but you're missing the big audience. Go ahead.
Well, gosh.
Go ahead.
Hey, how you doing, guys?
Your time's running. Start that clock running.
Oh, for real. Okay. Hi, my name is Mark Merkel, and my mission in life is to educate students in the community about. about what happens when you get in a car with a drunk driver. I'm reading from this because I suffer traumatic brain injury and I get off track. Through March Pad, People Against Drug Driving, I hope to prevent others from making the same mistakes and suffering the same consequences I have. Now, these are statistics. In the city of Reno, as of November 20th, 2012, that's last year if you didn't know, there were 601 arrests, 199 of those were crashes and five fatalities. The city of Reno as of 2000, I mean, as of November 20th, 2013, there have been 688 arrests, 192 crashes, and one fatality. And in 2012, there were 10,322 people killed in drunk driving crashes nationwide. There, there were 9,870 people killed in 2011, so yeah, nationwide. This isn't social hour. This isn't social hour.
Nobody said it was.
You were, talk, was I interrupting you?
No, sir. I listened to what you said. Would you like to sit down or finish?
Gosh, I'm sorry, sir. But I just want, just have a couple words left. Parents don't drive drunk with their kids in the car. Kids, listen to your parents. They were young once. Listen to your teachers. They just want to make good citizens of you. They're there to help. I never listened to either one and look what happened to me. My life is completely changed as a result of getting in the car with a drunk driver. Gosh, that was good.
Thank you very much. Appreciate you. I did uncover a little plaque that was left there by the Northern Nevada Children's Cancer Foundation saying thanks and I'll give it, it's a cute little sign. Okay. adjourned? My favorite motion. Do I have a second? All in favor say aye. Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. This time, we'll go into a joint meeting of the city council and the redevelopment agency. Madam Secretary, call the robe.
Shivi, absent. Breckus.
Here.
Zadra.
Here.
Delgado, absent. Dorch.
Here.
Jordan.
Here.
Kachal.
Here. Any public comment cards? Okay. Approval of the agenda? Motion second. All in favor say aye. Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Approval of the minutes, September 25th. Motion second. Have a second. All in favor say aye.
Mayor, I'd like to call attention to the fact that at the item C, I repeated my request that the council and the agency board hold a workshop possibly with our redevelopment agency advisory board to discuss and review the overall comprehensive plan for the redevelopment agency and thus downtown. And I just note that I don't see that on this agenda and I'm wondering, just want to call attention to that, that again.
Okay.
When we get to future items, I'll ask again.
Okay. On item F1, we have a public speaker. Oh, yes, we need to vote on that. I'm sorry. Motion second. All in favor say aye. Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Now we'll go to item E1. Mr. Lorton.
Oh, it was for F1 I was going to speak on. That was your F1 you had earlier.
F1, okay. All right.
Sit back down.
No. I'll call you up.
Okay.
Hold on, mind E1.
Let's approve.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
I have some questions about this situation here. We own the parking garage.
Lori Miles, Public Works, yes, redevelopment agency owns the parking garage.
What sort of encumbrances do we have on that parking garage? We're bringing in a new tenant, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Where are we, how leased up are we now?
I'm sorry, this will be the last vacant space occupied, so we'll be fully occupied.
Are we debt free on the parking garage?
No.
What is our debt obligation on the parking garage?
I will refer to Robert.
Robert Chisel, Finance Director. For the record, the parking garage as well as the number of RDA items are in a series of bonds, so it's not broken out as a single series for the parking garage. But overall, currently, there's about $30 million of outstanding debt for the RDA and a portion of that is the parking garage. So there's, there wasn't a single series of bonds for the parking garage.
Was the parking garage at one point maybe clear or we owed some money and then we used it as a security? I mean, was the parking garage securitized? Is that what happened?
I believe when it was built, I was not here, it was bonded for at the time to build the garage and then it had been refinanced over a number of times as part of the RDA.
Okay, so it's been resecuritized. So we really don't know, I guess. My question is, we don't know how much we owe divorced out of everything else on the parking garage to really know. You know how when you own commercial real estate, you're trying to do a, like a cap rate? It's a capitalization rate to kind of assess how much value. Do we have a sense of how much we're getting and is the parking garage making money for us or is it an asset of some value, do we know?
The parking garage as a whole is making revenue above its operating costs. Now, we have never analyzed as far as the cap rate and the return on investment of the capital of building the garage. Part of it, I believe at the time the RDA built the garage is to provide parking for the downtown area and to provide assistance in parking in the downtown core.
So it may provide a, a public policy purpose otherwise.
I believe that was at the time. Again, I was not at the city at the time.
Do we know how much, do we have a kind of a list of what our capital deficiencies are and when we need to reinvest and put money in repair and maintenance operations into the garage?
I believe Public Works does have a list of items that they need as far as capital improvements, whether it's in roadways in or our capital buildings. I would think that a parking garage, a steel and concrete structure probably has, maintenance is more minimal, but that would be a Public Works item.
Okay. I guess the reason I'm asking these questions is reflected in my minutes is, you've been asking and asking for a workshop to think about, understand the context of our redevelopment agency. Just adopted a rather complicated fund policy related to our, I guess, castigating debt obligations for the agency and, and we keep getting leases that, or, you know, kind of more operational things that are tied to some of these assets, but I feel like the big picture is not coming through and I'm having a hard time with it. And I'm also wondering about this agreement. Did this go to the RAB? I know we have an appointed advisory board to consult and advise us on redevelopment. Did they comment on this?
Lori Miles, Public Works. This property is listed with Colliers International for listing, but I don't believe it went to the RAB.
So we're not asking our advisory group on redevelopment to comment on, you know, whether or not these are good leases for us or it's a good tenant? Just not.
If I can, for the record, Bill Thomas, Assistant City Manager. I think the question is what would that, that group, you know, we've, we've set aside a, we have an agent, as Lori pointed out, that manages the building for us. Their objective is to, to get as close if not to market rate to lease all our space. So I would question what the value would be to take it to a third party board to say, well, should we or shouldn't we have a lease? I mean, we've kind of already given the direction, go lease out this building. You know, whether it's a flower shop or a pizza parlor, the question would be what would the value be added to have, you know, a third party look at it and say whether it should or shouldn't be a type of business. So that would be mildly, I think that RAB would be for bigger picture issues like, for example, if we were going to buy or build another parking garage, that would be kind of the policy discussion we'd want to run by them. But we already have this facility. We already have kind of the direction on what we're trying to do with it. So again, it would be a question of what would be the value of asking them about individual leases.
And I know that, I think Mr. Scott's still their chairman or something like that. And I know that the RDA downtown and stuff like that have just been supporting whatever goes in there and to make it so it's viable and stuff. And since the post office is there, a lot of people have been using it more than they have.
Well, I guess if we have a board that's not meeting, we're not looking to them for much. What are we doing with them? And that gets to the bigger question of what are we doing with the agency? And really it gets to a question, I think, about, you know, what's our, is that correct, Mr. Assistant Manager?
I think it'd be a fair characterization to say that we're trying to maintain what was done before. If you, if you look at what the big purpose of the redevelopment agency was, it really was active and involved when there was tax increment money to be spent and projects to be done. And that's where they had a staff of 20 some people. So, you know, we're, we're in a very different situation. I'm not downplaying the idea of bringing back to the council a discussion about what we're doing, but to be quite honest, we don't have the resources that were in place when the redevelopment agency was created and when the RAB was created, which is a very proactive, spend money, build things. And we just, we're not there. We have debt. So it's a different world. It doesn't mean that we can't bring back and we certainly will. And I was willing to commit a date in January to, to bring this information back to the council to decide whether you wanted a full blown workshop, certainly to at least give you an indication of where we're at and what we have been doing as far as redevelopment. But it is a very different agency from what historically it was.
Okay.
I mean, even to the extent right now we have no employees, so.
Right.
Well, I'll look for that discussion because an asset maximization, you know, to help our debt situation is a part of that, so thank you for that.
Chair, entertain a motion for the, we've got the motion, that's right. So much rambling, I just lost my place. All in favor say aye. Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Mr. Lorton, you want to talk about agenda items?
Yes, sir. F1.
F1.
That was the original F1. When you asked me earlier, it was on this sheet. How you doing? For the record, Eddie Lorton. And I wanted to talk about F1 here. The redevelopment agency actually in other cities have abolished their redevelopment agency. It doesn't work. It's not a good plan and we haven't done much with ours for a while and it was a downhill road. And why they're at it, I wish they would disband the redevelopment agency and I would certainly like to see if we're ever going to collect our 1.6 million owed on the ballpark so we could have some money for the redevelopment agency. Thank you.
Thank you. Any items you want to put on the agenda, gang?
Just that we have a workshop to discuss comprehensively the future of our redevelopment. Yeah, okay.
Any other items? Chair, entertain, no public comment? All right. Motion made and seconded. All in favor say aye. Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously.